March 31st Birmingham City Council Meeting is called to order. We have our invocation by Reverend Derek Hudson, Pastor Ebenezer Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Council President Pro Tem James J. Roberson Jr. Please stand.
May we bow for just a moment. Gracious God, our eternal Father, we come again in the precious and powerful name of our Christ. We come as always, God, first to give you thanks, to give you glory, to give your honor, and to give you praise, for we recognize your awesomeness in our lives. Now, God, as we gather together as a people before your presence and in the performance of the duties of this city for which you have blessed us to be citizens of, we ask now your divine direction, Father, that you would lead us from our mayor down to the least considered one among these officials for which you have given unto us. Bless our council members, give them wisdom and give them insight. Help them, Father, as they conduct the business of this great city. Father, we thank you for the privilege and the opportunity of being a part of such a city as this. Now, God, we pray for those who are less fortunate than we are. God, that as we uplift one another, we will always be mindful of those who are not even able to uplift themselves. Thank you, God, for our mayor. Thank you for our council persons. Thank you for all who are connected. To the end, God, you receive praise, honor, and glory, for it's in the name of our matchless Christ we pray. Amen.
Please lift the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please. Councilmember Abbott.
President.
Councilmember Hoyt.
President.
Councilmember Lundey. Councilmember Parker.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Rafferty.
President.
President Pro Tem Roberson.
Present.
Councilmember Scales.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tyson.
President Austin.
Good morning. Present. Good morning, Mr. Clerk. We have a motion on the minutes from December 2nd, 9th, and 16th of 2014.
Second.
Rafferty, Roberson.
Okay. Voting should be open. Councilmember Abbott, Hoyt.
I vote aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes, I'm sorry.
All right, that vote should be up.
That item passes. The minutes from December 23rd through March 24th, 2015 are not ready. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, Councilmember. Good morning. April 9th, 2015 is...
April 9th, 2015 is designated as Stand Up For Transportation Day. This day commemorates the importance of public transportation in our nation. We have members of the BJCTA Board as well as the Executive Director here to accept the proclamation on behalf of the city of Birmingham. If you all would join me. I'll do it all right this morning. Good. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas April 9th, 2015 marks Stand For Stand Up For Transportation Day, a national transportation infrastructure day that highlights the critical need to invest in updating our nation's transportation infrastructure. And whereas transportation is the economic backbone of our nation's economy, and public transportation is an important part of our nation's transportation system, federal funding for public transportation infrastructure needs to increase, and Congress needs to pass a long-term multimodal transportation bill by May 31st, 2015. And whereas public transportation is a proven catalyst for economic growth, since for every dollar invested in public transportation, four dollars in economic return is generated locally, creating economically vibrant and prosperous communities. And whereas public transportation offers millions of Americans access to economic opportunities since the earliest, since nearly sixty percent of the trips taken on public transportation are for work commutes. And whereas Stand Up For Transportation Day will be celebrated in small, medium, and large communities across the United States as a day that highlights the critical need for funding transportation infrastructure, both public transportation and highway infrastructure. Now therefore, I, William A. Bell, Sr., Mayor of the City of Birmingham, Alabama, do hereby proclaim April 9th, 2015 as Stand Up For Transportation Day, and call upon all people of Birmingham to join with public transportation, public transportation agencies and businesses across the country to encourage greater federal investment in public transportation infrastructure. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the BJCTA, I wish to present this proclamation to encourage all of our citizens to support public transportation and its funding. So, thank you.
Again, to Mayor and the council, we thank you for the proclamation. Thank you for your efforts. Ultimately, thank you for this season of unity and working together. I think in the history of the Transit Authority, BJCTA, I've never seen, I know my terms, I've never seen such unity and such compassion and such a team spirit of working together for transit for the betterment of our region. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, wait a minute, don't go just yet. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, the Executive Director of the Transit Authority, a couple of weeks ago, received a very high-stimmed honor from one of our transportation industry organization. And I want to thank Ann August for her outstanding efforts here in Birmingham and her national recognition for doing, for contributing to the public transportation all across this country. So, Ann, if you would, please step up and say a few words to the council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's a humbling experience to stand before you after the mayor had indicated about this award. The things that I do, I don't do it for myself, I do it for the individuals that we serve. It's about our country, it's about our citizens, it's about those individuals that don't have a voice. That is what I do, and that's what I do best. I thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for your service. Go ahead.
Ms. August, I don't want to interrupt Mayor. Do you mind coming back up? Actually, your whole board, all the workers. I'm really, I can't say enough to you board members how well that this woman represents the Transit Authority. You have absolutely gotten all of the respect in the world from me as this counselor. I don't know if the public is aware, and I'm sure that they're not, because it was a private meeting, but I was really impressed with you when we went to the federal government about transit. She didn't have one stitch of paper and could tell you how many was on the fleet, could tell you what the city needed, talked about the budget, even talked about the different funding mechanisms to pay for it, not just with city dollars or county dollars, but talking about federal money. And I was so impressed by you. You have really made a mark on my memory. I have such regard especially for women who get out here and make it happen. And I just want to say to your board, I am very prideful considering things in the past that you all keep this woman. We can always have little things that we don't necessarily like, but the end result is what you're looking for. And I'm impressed by you, I'm impressed by your staff, and I just wanted to say that to you this morning. That always stuck with me, and I think that I say that to you privately, but I wanted to say that publicly. It makes a difference when the mayor and the council goes together, and you got someone speaking, and you just spout it right on out. And they know you know what you're talking about. So it lets people know we got professionals working with the city too, in order to help better get our transit together. So, thank you, and I wanted to say that to you. God bless you. Thank you, Ms. President.
Council Rafferty.
Ms. Ann. Board Chair, you weren't clued in on this inside information, but Ms. Ann, the Esther effect. Would you, and Bakari, you're a part of that as well, that was one of the key things when we started building this transit board and this transit system, and the strength of women and Counselor Scales mentioned it, but would you speak a little bit about that empowering, and especially because it helped Ms. Brooks as well through how it changed the way that we view transit and how we're fighting so hard?
For those of you who are familiar with your Bibles, Esther, of course, is one that is mentioned in there. We try to practice what we preach on a daily basis, and actually, it deals with teamwork, it deals with understanding who you are as a person, and what your purpose in life is. And sometimes people never reach or understand what their purpose in life is. I learned a long time ago, when I was a Brownie, from a Brownie to a soldier, to serving my country for the last thirty years, and being in transportation for thirty-five years, I'm a public servant, and I understand that. And I try to do that daily, as Esther did her job as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Tyson.
I'm coming in at the end, sorry that I'm late, but I know this is Women's Month, this is the last day, so all I got to do is say, "Mop power to the sisters."
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all very much. You know, several years ago, we had a young lady come before this council to talk about starting something up here in Birmingham to highlight fashion and the people who work in the fashion industry. This past week, TLC premiered their new show called Bride By Design, starring this young lady, Heidi Elnor. This morning, Heidi is here with us to tell us about the new show and about this year's Birmingham Fashion Week. And Heidi, if you would.
Morning, y'all.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. How are y'all? Good. Good. Good to see y'all. Um, thank you, Mr. President.
Can you be a little bit more energetic? Come on, pep it up, pep it up.
I have a TV show. Y'all haven't seen it, it's because on Friday night, 8:30 on TLC.
Can you speak in the microphone, Heidi?
Oh, sure thing, I got you. What's great is I've been super blessed being here from Birmingham and to be able to have my own show on TLC. And what's the coolest thing about my show, it airs Friday night at 8:30 Central, obviously it's national, but what's awesome is it's all shot here in Alabama. Every bit of it is done right in Pepper Place. And if you watch the end of the show, it says, "Made in Alabama." When I was first approached by the producers, they're like, "We want to do this out in LA," and I'm like, "No, we're bringing it back home." It's very important for me to support this city, that's why I created Birmingham Fashion Week, but it's very important for me to take my gifts and my blessings as being a designer and bring focus on our city. So if you get an opportunity to watch Birmingham Fashion Week, not Birmingham Fashion Week, but we'll watch that too, but the show Bride By Design, it highlights the city. It shows you downtown, it shows you Lynn Park, it shows you the big Birmingham sign. If you watch it, you will see how it celebrates our city in such a beautiful way. And the show is extremely positive. It focuses on our talent, it focuses on our people, and that's all I want to do. I just want to support this city because I love it so much. Born and raised here, my family was here, and so that's that part of my life. Four years ago, and this is our fifth year, I created Birmingham Fashion Week, and it was ordered to give back. I grew up in Hayfield in Morris, and I was told, "You can't be a fashion designer." And I'm like, "Well, look, I'm not doing blood, so I'm not going to be a nurse, my mom is a nurse, can't do that." And my dad was a truck driver, and I'm not about to start trucking across the country. So what can I do that I'm passionate about, and it was fashion. So I started my career. And so I wanted to do something to give back to the community. And so we have a thing called the Rising Design Star Challenge, which is currently on display at the Birmingham Museum of Art. We had over two hundred kids apply to be a part of this, and it takes kids from all over the state. They don't have to have any experience, they don't have to have any money, because I didn't, I wasn't raised that way, I just had to work hard, but they can take non-traditional items and build a garment of their choosing. It helps to encourage kids to be creative, to step outside the box. We also have a thing that's called the Emerging Designer Challenge. We have kids from across the southeast who are designing works of art that then prepare them for college. We offer scholarships. We also have a thing for models. We had six hundred models apply last Sunday at Slos to be a model. So it just helps to inspire our youth, to encourage them. It's so hard with social media today to not feel pretty or good about yourself, so that's what Birmingham Fashion Week's about. I'd love for y'all to come. It is truly a community event. We celebrate each other, and it's just an awesome thing for Birmingham. So I want you to come, I want you to see it, I want you to experience it, and I want you to watch my TV show because it's really stinking good. And that is all I have to say. Are we good? Yay! And I think this sweet little lady right here is a rock star, and that's all I have to say, I just met her today, but I think you're amazing.
Council Rafferty.
Ms. Heidi. When Counselor Austin brought you up for the first Fashion Week, I had contacted you about my niece, and she did compete, and she learned a lot, and I wanted to update you, actually, at the age of twenty-four now, she is the senior training manager for Sears, and she's still designing clothes.
That's amazing.
So I want to thank you for that impact. Plus, she just got married, and she's currently in Hawaii enjoying herself. But if it hadn't been for that experience, I don't think, like you said, the fashion design kind of gets thrown to the wind, and she did end up getting an architectural degree, but her heart is in fashion. And so the exposure that you give through your Fashion Week and the other programs you do in Birmingham really are far-reaching, and I want to thank you for that. And that's two powerful women we've had today on the last day of National Women's Month.
Mm-mm, we know play.
Council Tyson.
Yes, I want, I wanted to make sure that, I want to get with you, where you can come to the western side of town, the southwest side of town, where stars are born, to make sure that we can get some of that highlight on your TV show.
Oh.
So make sure, I want to talk to you after the council meeting.
Of course, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Council Scales.
Ms. Heidi.
Yes, me.
Yeah, you are very energetic, but you, you know, who would watch a boring show?
I mean, really.
I mean, really.
Nobody's got time for that.
Let me just say congratulations to you. I'm glad the mayor brought you up, because anytime we can have something as homegrown and talking about Birmingham, and more importantly, to have a woman at the helm talking about Birmingham. So I'm glad, I knew about the National Women's Month, but I think women need more than a month. We birth babies three hundred and sixty-five days in a year. So with that having said, won't compete with my colleague, but I always say, when they had to follow the star, they went to the east. So I think we're going to combine all of that together and say, "We'll support your show, we absolutely would like for you to highlight some other parts, some other jewels in the city, and we're welcoming you to take us there," you know? And we take you there, excuse me. So congratulations, and we do have to tune into your show because it's called Ratings. You have no ratings, you have no advertising, no advertising dollars, you're going to be off the air. So congratulations, and we look forward to tuning into your show.
Thank you so much.
Stay energetic.
Mr. Pro Tem.
All right.
Thank you, Heidi, and I'm just, all this women talk this morning, I don't know what's going on. We got good leadership in our council, in our mayor, and I think the way you could help us out with this fashion show that you're doing is, let's, we got some fashionable council members, our mayor is very fashionable, you know, he comes with all kind of combinations, you know, every week, and I think we might need to highlight the council members. And let us be in the fashion show, they're on the show.
Look, I just, you just signed yourself up, you know that, right?
Yes, well, you know, I've been a model a long time ago.
Okay.
So, I did it for Parisians, but I think we have Counselor Austin, who's pretty sharp-dressed, and Counselor Tyson comes, very fashionable, and Rafferty, and...
Not my business.
Yes, about your business. So I think we could do that sometimes, let's talk about that.
We will, for sure.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Heidi. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. You know, day in and day out, the Office of Public Information in the mayor's office does an outstanding job of communicating via social media. And as evidence of that, that department, or that office, has won three AVA Digital Awards. The awards include the Gold Award for Digital Marketing and Digital Marketing Campaign, Birmingham Human Rights Campaign, the Gold Award for Social Media Sites, the City of Birmingham Instagram, and honorable mention for Tweeter, Twitter, Tweeter, Twitter, y'all know what I'm talking about, overall. So I want to encourage everyone to keep tweeting and liking and sharing as we continue to work towards utilizing social media to get the information out. You know, that unit, under the leadership of April Odom with Tanil and Alicia and Tyrone, they work twenty-four hours a day to make sure that information gets out about the city. And I want to thank them all on the hard work that they've done and the awards that they've received for that office. So thank you all very much. The City of Birmingham recently partnered with UNESCO to put out social media blasts during the International Day of the Elimination of Racial Discrimination in conjunction with my keynote address to the delegation. The partnership resulted in tweets and Instagram posts that reached over 3.5 million followers via the United Nations and UNESCO accounts, with hundreds of retweets credited to the city. And I want to thank everyone with UNESCO and the United Nations for making it possible to highlight Birmingham and its role in the human rights movement, not just here in Alabama and this nation, but throughout the world. I am proud to announce that Birmingham's Entrepreneur District is one of twelve project sites in North America selected to participate in the 2015 Echo Districts Incubator. Echo Districts, echo... At Polygrip, the Echo Districts Incubator is a three-day intensive project-based workshop designed to accelerate district scale sustainability across North America. Echo Districts approach a comprehensive strategy to accelerate sustainable development at the district or neighborhood scale by integrating building and infrastructure projects with community and individual actions. May 18th through the 20th, a project team consisting of city staff, entrepreneur district stakeholders with the, will be in Portland, Oregon to participate in the invitation-only incubator. The incubator provides advanced training to help teams accelerate their sustainable neighborhood or district projects. World-class faculty will guide our project team through a powerful mix of one-on-one technical assistance, expert facilitation, tours, presentations, and work sessions designed around Echo District protocol, a comprehensive process management tool to promote and integrate sustainable development solutions and strong local leadership. I know, I saw Bruce Harrington. Bruce, if you could come up and share with the council a little bit more and the public about the Echo Districts and the direction that we're headed in. If you got some other members of the team, they can come up also.
I have Marshall Anderson, who is a member of the American Institute of Architects and Principal of Anderson Nicholas Design Initiative, and Rhea Williams, who is the Executive Director for the local chapter of the American Institute of Architects. So on behalf of the entire chapter, three hundred, three hundred and fifty members, we're pleased to be able to partner with the city in pursuing an opportunity to learn about Echo Districts. Two city staff and I went to a conference last fall, and the result of that conference piqued our interest, and we spoke to a number of the staff and presented to Mayor Bell about a month ago or so, we were able to submit for participation in the incubator, which will be an intensive three-day process. And we're looking forward to seeing a portion of our city be intensively developed with sustainable initiatives between the buildings and the infrastructure and the citizens.
Are there any questions? If not, Bruce, I want to thank you and the team for really being accepted into this program, and I know we're going to have exciting opportunities come out of it. And as we continue to build a green, sustainable Birmingham, the work that you all are going to be doing in conjunction with our Planning and Engineering Department, our Community Development Department, and other departments will really improve the quality of life for all of our citizens here in Birmingham. So keep up the good work, and go and make things happen. Chris, you want to say something?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bell. Chris Hatcher, Urban Design Administrator for the city. I just want to echo Bruce's sentiments, and I also want to thank city staff who played a part in drafting the application and getting it to the Echo District Organization out in Portland. I want to recognize, of course, Andre Bidson, his action, who provided the leadership, Deputy Director of PEP, Edwin Ravel, Mr. Cologne, who provided leadership in community development, Matthew Chernock, who is a senior designer, senior urban designer in community development, and Tim Gambrea, who is a zoning administrator for the city. They all did a great job in getting this application together and helping us receive this, this much, much, much acclaimed award. Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
On Saturday, March 21st, Bridgette Williams participated in the Jefferson County 4H Competitive Day. The competition affords students from across Jefferson County to display various talents. Bridgette, a junior historic, AH Parker High School entry, won first place, The World As We See It, and second place, The World As We Imagine It. I would like to call up Bridgette at this time so we can formally congratulate her on a job well done. Bridgette?
To Mayor William Bell, Council President Jonathan Austin, members of the councils and their department heads. Good morning. I am Bridgette Williams, a junior at the historic AH Parker High School. As a competitor in the Jefferson County 4H Competitive Day, I competed with one hundred and twenty-five students from the, from the schools across Jefferson County such as Vestavia Hills, Homewood, Bessemer, Home Schools, and Private Schools. By the end of, by the end of the day, I received the first-place medal for The World I See and second place for The World I Imagine in the photo, in the photography category. These are the pictures that I presented. One, this one is The World I See, and it's of a little girl holding up a sign, "Never Give Up." And this picture is The World I Imagine for, it was the bridge at Selma, that was the anniversary, so I thought that would be a good picture to present. So, while I'm slated, while I am slated to participate in the worldwide Alabama 4H contest, I am scheduled to be in Beijing, China. So, but at this time, I would like to ask Mayor William Bell and Council President Jonathan Austin to join me, please. I would like to present you my second place award.
Thank you. Did you give him, which one did you give him?
Second place.
Second place. But, you know, we're not going to hold on to this because it's important for you to keep this as a remembrance of the hard work and the honor that you've brought to our public school system here in the city of Birmingham. And we just want to encourage you to keep up the good work, and keep on making us proud, keep making your parents proud as well. Thank you. Just real quick, we're just so proud of her. I've watched her and her sisters grow up over so many years, and just to see all the work that you've done and just, you continue to make me proud. I'm just glad to be able to be your representative and keep making all of us proud in Birmingham. Congratulations.
Mr. President. Let me tell you something, little lady. Every time I see you, I just sit and smile because you could have gone to an alternative high school. You chose to continue on to be at A.H. Parker High School, and you're doing really, really, really well. The most important thing that I really like about you and admire about you is that I see the girl in you. I want you to know that. Because in my district, I'm mama scales, and so when you dress too grown, mama scales don't speak. As a counselor, I tell you that you look too grown. But you have a very respectful presentation, and every time I see you, I say, "You go, girl. You, you're going to do some really good things." And Mayor, I am so proud that you brought her up because this is what every child needs in this city. If you continue to enforce, you continue to expose and put you out there, there's nothing that you cannot do. You understand? Now, you have a very soft-spoken voice, and I know that my voice is very commanding, but even in your softness, you're like a soft barracuda. You get the job done. Yeah, barracudas don't stink the way you think they do, but they get the job done. Don't ever forget that. And so, I look forward to seeing your sweet perfume and the walls of some great places because we won't be around here forever, okay? And I can tell you that for me up front. I don't plan to be here very, very long. But I will say that I look forward to the day that folk like you going to come and take our places, and you're going to do great things because you've got that energy, and you could be able to take us to that next level. So, I'm very proud of you. I always tell you that, and your sisters, and your daddy, and your mama. But I did want to highlight your daddy because your daddy, I'm telling you, that's your biggest cheerleader. Everywhere I see you, I see him. Everywhere there is a place to go, I'm, I'm going to see Mr. Williams. And I think to myself, I say, "Thank God he okay with the mayor because he'd be up there at City Hall and everywhere with his daughters." But you know what? That's the investment that you always see a return on. So, congratulations. God bless you. I'm glad that the mayor smiled upon you and, and, and celebrating you today. You deserve it. Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President. Vice and Councilor.
Well, she already...
Bridgette. Councilor twice.
No, it's Women's Day. You go first.
Bridgette is actually, she's one of the Black Youth Vote members, and her sister was one too. She actually started a chapter at college in Kentucky, and she will be able to go to DC in two months. And so, I would love for the city council to help us send her and some more young people from the City of Birmingham where they can go and lobby on the hill and have that experience and it's well organized. And that's an opportunity for us to put our money where our mouth at and stop, to make sure that these children have the, you know, the experience that they need because we are struggling trying to get them up there, just like I struggled trying to get the 10 people that I took last week to DC to lobby on the hill. So, I think we do, they deserve it for number one. Her sister went, what, it was three years ago? Charlie, was it? It was three years, two years ago? Two years, her sister went on the hill and lobbied. So, she wants the opportunity along with some more of our young people to have their opportunity also. So, I'm going to make out a purpose and see if we can help get you out there, okay?
Well, Bridgette, I have fashioned a new term that I think perfectly describes you is humbly confident because that's what I see when I see you. And I just thank God for your humility. I'm reminded of Matthew Henry, great theologian, that says that humility is not denying the power that one has, but admitting what little power we do have is through us and not from us. And I see God working through you, and I see God working through your parents. And so, they've been great, great nurturers because you didn't get here by accident. It had to be intentional. Somebody had to instill something in you. And so, I'm just delighted that you would come and share your dreams and your aspiration with us this morning. Certainly thank the mayor for bringing you here, but want to thank your parents for directing you in the right path. And so, wow, the world awaits you. Matter of fact, the world awaits the Williams sisters. Okay? I know we've got some that play tennis, but we've got some admonitions when we talk about the Williams sisters in this context. And so, I really do appreciate you coming and sharing with us this morning. All right, very good.
Also, I would like to present my friend, Brendan McNilly. He also participated in the competition, and he would like to speak as well.
See there, that's what I'm saying. Sharing, hustling, lighting, that's what I'm talking about. That's a lesson for us.
Yeah, I won third place. I was in 4-H for about like, since I was in sixth grade, and I'm currently vice president in the advisory board right now. So, we're going to be doing some things with 4-H that are going to be pretty big, so just like, thank you.
Give your name and what grade you're in at school.
My, my school, I go to A.H. Parker High School, 17, and I'm a junior.
Awesome. Appreciate you as well. Bless you.
Awesome. Keep it up. Thank you all so much. You know, it's always good to highlight positive things that's going on in our public school system. And A.H. Parker has always been known as a school that produced scientific scholars going back for decades. So, I want to thank them for continuing the tradition at A.H. Parker. So, thank you all so much. Right now, I'd like to bring up Bishop Calvin Woods. Bishop, if you would come up and share with us about some activities you have going.
Giving obedience to the presence of the Holy Spirit, to our honorable mayor, honorable council brothers and sisters, all of us aware that we are facing the rising sun of a new day that has already begun here in Birmingham. Many shades of darkness have been rolled away as a result of the hard labor, working prayers of the city, citizens of this city. And we are very proud to be a citizen of Birmingham. The SCLC Birmingham Chapter, Mayor William Bell, concerned clergy and churches in connection with the Birmingham Police Department, Birmingham Fire Department, concerned citizens of Birmingham, and families of victims of violence unite to express and exemplify love. A motorized caravan will travel to specific areas in this city where violence and murders have claimed the lives of some of our children. We named this the Parade of Love. We will commemorate the anniversary of the assassination of the Apostle of Love, Dr. Martin Luther King. This Saturday, April the 4th, will bring to our minds that he was assassinated 47 years ago, not because he hate, but because he loved. The drummage of love and justice reminds us, "I have decided to stick with love. Hate is too great a burden to bear." We will decorate our vehicles with signs of love and support. That's all to be on them. Love one another. Love has brought us this far, and love will carry us on. A detailed parade rung, route has been set out by our police chief where lives have been taken. Not all of them, but a few. Parade will only last one hour. Join us as we honor the families of victims and provide a support system through love. Love conquers all. It's the full feeling of the law. You can't get a word greater than that, and that's all we're going to talk about. Love. This event will affect the entire city of Birmingham. Saturday, April the 4th, we will begin at the Abyssinian Baptist Church, 2301 Avenue E, Enslie on their spacious parking lot. At 9:00 AM, we'll have prayer and position. We won't be stopping praying in all the places. We're going to have our prayer and get situated. As some of you know, we, a group of us have been praying in these places. We've been making a lot of noise, but we've been going around these places, saturating it certainly with prayer. Please join us this Saturday at 9 o'clock for prayer and positioning, and at 10:00 AM, Parade of Love through the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop. Thank you, ministers, and we appreciate your prayers and concern for violent deaths in this community. Finally, Mr. President, let me thank the citizens of Birmingham for the outstanding welcome that they gave the President of the United States on this past Thursday. From the moment the President's entourage left the National Guard facility on Eastlake Boulevard until the time that it revived, that it arrived at Lawson State Campus, the citizens of Birmingham, as some folks say, showed up and showed out in a positive way. He was so impressed by the warm welcome that he received from everyone. This was his first time coming to Birmingham since he's been President of the United States. He had been here as a senator, and he said he didn't get that kind of welcome the last time he came here. But it showed the love that the citizens had for the President, and he was real excited to have the opportunity to discuss some of the issues and projects that we're working on here in the city. And I think we'll see some benefits that come from that as time passes. I also want to thank our public safety organizations, the Police Department and the Fire Department, for the outstanding preparation and working with the Secret Service and other law enforcement agencies to make sure that everything went off without a hitch. Our Public Works Department, on very short notice, took care of a lot of different problems and issues so that we could present a, a, a city that was deserving of a presidential visit. So, I want to thank everyone, everyone in this entire city and my city councilors for the welcome that they gave the President. And I got word back the very next day from some of his staff members that they all were truly delighted and excited about what happened here in the City of Birmingham. So, thank you all so much. That's all I have at this time, Mr. President. Councilor Skiles.
Thank you. And Mayor, before I give my citizen concerns, let me just say I do thank you for the presentation that our city was well represented. And to be very candid with you, especially one that's in media, I thought to myself, I said, "Wow, they think we are not progressive here in the South, and, and we look good." I mean, Birmingham really, Mr. Mayor, looked good when we pulled up and saw the signs and all of that, and I said, "This is how you do it. This is how you make an impression on people. Don't matter what they think before they get here, but once they get here, what kind of impression that you're making?" And I will say this, and I'll talk about it more later. Mr. Mayor, we, we are obviously in conjunction with one another, are making a difference, especially in that payday loan business. I was so excited to know, two years ago, when Director Cardre came to Birmingham, and then last week, come out of council meeting, and somebody said, "The White House has been calling you." I said, "Calling me?" And the work that you've done on behalf of ordinary citizens just struggling to try to get ahead, that makes a difference. It says something. And I want to say to you, Mayor, that I appreciate all the work that you're doing with the White House, appreciate this council for even passing the first and only payday loan moratorium. Took a lot of work. We went back and forth in 2011, but I could laugh and say it paid off. So, many times, I was standing in front of these payday loan places with a camera talking about payday loans when it wasn't popular. So, it's a good thing when the federal government sees that you've got a city that's trying to do something about a problem rather than talk about it. So, I want to say congratulations to you, Mr. Mayor. You had the opportunity, awesome opportunity, to speak before his presence and, and for this council for the great work that has already been done here in the city. On our citizen concerns, on Redstone Lane, Met Red Mill Road, which Red Mill is one word, Redstone Lane and Roebuck Drive, that we have potholes in those areas that are being requested by a citizen to be filled, and we've provided that information already to the Mayor's Office. Lastly, Mr. Mayor, I do want to bring to your attention, again, that help in terms of enforcement about the signs. I can tell, and I'm very grateful, that Public Works is doing all that they can to get these signs down, but I still see them along the Parkway, along our main thoroughfares, and they just basically are taking over. But I think if we just work on trying to notify these folk that maybe if they got a fine, they'll stop putting them up, and then we can use our resources in other ways. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that our main thoroughfares, particularly Parkway East, if you go down Huffman Road, Old Springville Road, Carson Road, all of those have signs, signage of businesses along the Parkway and those different roads that I just mentioned. So, Mr. Mayor, if we can get some assistance in that regard, I'd certainly appreciate it. Lastly, as about these 18-wheelers that are parking on private property at these businesses that have closed, on Roebuck Drive where that Old China Buffet is located, this is more for Police Department, I'm sure, we need some enforcement on that. When you go down to Food Giant on Parkway East, the, those 18-wheeler beds are basically taking over the, the parking lot. So, I want to bring that to your attention because I know you're working hard, you and the Office of Economic Development, to try to bring development to the city. But we need to make sure that we manage, help you to manage those things so that we are not serving as a deterrent in our own neighborhoods. So, thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to compliment you for getting the President of the United States to come to Birmingham. I have to admit, my feelings were really hurt when he did not come for the 50th anniversary. So, my nose was kind of out of joint, but you got him here. I know he didn't just wake up one day and say, "I think I'll go to Birmingham, Alabama." So, I wanted to thank you and your staff for, for getting the President of the United States to come to Birmingham. And then, the other thing I want to thank you for, and your staff, is getting that sink hole on Clermont taken care of. You know, that was, I can't count the number of calls and complaints we got about it, and, and it's fixed, and it was fixed quickly, and it looks great, and everybody's happy. I realize it wasn't a real sink hole. It was a sewer-caused sink hole, stormwater caused, but regardless of the reason, it was a great big giant hole in the road. So, I just want to say thanks to your folks for getting it taken care of.
Thank you. You know, we had, ever since 2011, we've asked the President to come here to the City of Birmingham, and he always kept telling me that one day he would. We invited him for the 1963 commemoration. We've invited him for several other events, and right before the Selma to Montgomery event, we asked him if he could possibly stop here in Birmingham because the planning process for Selma took place here in Birmingham. And then, again, when we were in Selma, and I had the opportunity to talk to him again, we invited him, and he promised me that he would come. I just didn't expect him to come so soon after that, and it caused us to scramble. But he was very pleased, and, and I'm pleased and honored. But it's not just a matter of him coming here. It was also an opportunity for him to see firsthand some of the things that I've been talking to him about over the last several years. If the council noticed, when we go to Washington, DC as a body... If the council noticed, when we go to Washington DC as a body, we have access to the top administrative officials. And that's not by accident. That's because of the relationships that we have and the understanding within those departments that while Alabama's a red state, it has a blue heart. And that blue heart is the city of Birmingham. And we've been able to do a lot of good things and we look forward to doing a lot of other great things as we show unity in Washington DC with our Transit Board, with other boards and agencies, as we go there to present our case for the need for just a little help, just a little help. That's all we need to make things great here in Birmingham. So thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. And there's a lot that's been said as it relates to the Commander in Chief visiting our city. And I want to continue those sentiments in a positive manner. But I also want to give credit to Lawson State Community College. The President came to the heart of southwest Birmingham strategically for a reason. Lawson State Community College and its leadership and Dr. Perry Ward, administration have done an outstanding job to be one of the top 50 two-year colleges in this country, to offer educational opportunities to many in this city. And all hands were on deck. The Mayor expressed to different departments that were involved. Mayor, I hadn't seen Lake Shore as smooth as it's been in a long time. All the way to Sidney and over to Wilson Road. Charlie Williams, your efforts with Public Works and Mr. Fancher was tremendous. It looked like Taj Mahal in District 7. And that's how we should do for the President visiting southwest Birmingham. But I would like to give Dr. Perry Ward, his administration, an applaud for their efforts to see thousands to come to their campus, to see the President speak. A lot of people don't know, there's a lot of work done behind the scenes on that campus. There were a lot of conversations with the White House, that the President at college had directly in coordination with his staff, Geraldine Albright, Public Relations Department. And they did a great job and had some great hospitality of bringing our President. It was a collective effort. And I think a lot of people came forth from City Hall to citizens in the community, to Lawson State Community College to make this possible. And Lawson State Community College is a crown jewel, ladies and gentlemen. I'm fortunate to have that institution in my district. And it's just truly a blessing to see so many get a chance to see our President. But most of all, for the citizens in southwest Birmingham, those who got to see him coming through 65 from the airport and the motorcade and the children, the young people, to get a chance to witness President Barack Obama coming to our great city, I thought was just amazing. And that's, that's an actual experience that a lot of us will remember for a lifetime and we talked about for a lifetime. But I want to give kudos to all that were involved, but also to Dr. Perry Ward and his administration for what they did to make this possible, to have the President speak on their campus. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mayor, I have a complaint. 1545 Seventeenth Street Southwest, where the city tore down a house. It's wood in the front, on the street corner in front of the house, and it's wood in the back of the house and it has been there for a couple of months after the city tore that house down. Also, Denison Avenue between 15th and Jefferson Avenue. And I know you're doing the best you can, Mayor, about trying to get the streets fixed. I wish the President had a cane-down Denison because I'm so tired of tanning up my car. And it's just, those holes, they fill them up and they keep sinking back in. And I don't know whether it's because of the trucks or what, but it's just, it's not working. You know, they're filling up the holes, it's just not working. It just keeps sinking back in. It might last two weeks at the most, but it's back down again on Denison Avenue. And it's just, the potholes is just awful. Thank you.
Yes, I did want to say something about the President. You know, he has a unique way of, of meeting people. And he makes you feel that you're the only person in the whole room. And I do know that Ms. Hoyt is still excited about that hug she got from the President. I do know that because she, I hear it every night. But I do believe though, the Mayor's been a great champion for this city. But I'm gonna have to agree with Councilman Roberson. It is the work of the collective that gets the attention of the White House. And so we have to give prudence to Dr. Ward. He is such a man of humility. Most Presidents would have not given up that opportunity to welcome the President, but he did so. And it takes a lot for a man who had probably the opportunity of a lifetime to do so, and he gave it up to a younger person to do that. That's, that's what I call humility at its best. And, and Lawson State have done a tremendous job in this city. A lot of my workforce have been trained with respect to Lawson State. And so I want to say kudos to Dr. Ward and to his administration. They did an excellent job. And I asked somebody, I said, y'all just paint the gym? And they said, no. I said, wow, so it's always that way. So it's top-notch. So it wasn't much they had to do in order for the President to come because they are good stewards of what they've been given to work with. But I also have to give kudos to our Congresswoman. You know, I don't think it's every day you get to ride in Air Force One. And if you're riding Air Force One, I believe you have to be a friend of the President. And so we thank God for her relationship that she has with the President and the First Lady. And so I just, I was excited. And I want to say this, Council President, because I don't know when I have gone to Washington DC and seen such great unity and such great involvement than I saw a few weeks ago. And, and I'm telling you, and I think I text you, that I really saw us working together, participating and getting involved. And it got the attention of all those department heads. And I want to thank Raf Cook, Jr. Because obviously, we couldn't have got those persons in the room if he didn't work on that. And I feel that, you know, that we had the full attention of that delegation that represented the various departments that we met and Ms. August and you all were there. And I just feel that it was a collective at work and it got the attention. And so I know it doesn't happen by osmosis. You have to be intentional in what you do. And I want to say kudos to our President of this council and this Mayor because we got it done. And I think you are going to be very surprised as to how this city really evolved because of the great leadership that we have in this city proper. And so kudos to you, Mr. President, as well. And so I just thank that, thank God for that. And I think I wrote an email not too long ago. It's not the silos that get the attention of the administration, it is the collective. And I stand by that. And that's how we get it done. And so, you know, so when his contract come up, I'm gonna vote for it. And that'd be the first time in a long time. But I really felt that he had worked very hard and he was worth every bit of them dollars we've been paying him. So I was, I want to say that publicly. You know, sometimes we say stuff in private, but we don't say it in public. But when folk do a good job, I'm gonna give them praise. And, and that's where I am. And if you mess up, my mama say, I'm gonna get you where you mess up. So I do that too. But I, but I'm also subject to that same kind of treatment and I appreciate it. But I do think that we're on the right road and we're on the way to being even greater as a city with this kind of leadership and Jonathan Austin and Mayor William Anthony Bale, Sr. And, and I hope that, and I'm gonna make this observation because it needs to be said. But I noticed that when Ms. Abbott was talking, the Mayor looked up. When Scales talk, he looked down. When you talk, look down. We all deserve the same attention because I'm gonna give you the same attention. But that's who he is, so, you know, that is.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did want to add too, I was trying to hurry up and stay within my time limit. I want to concur about Dr. Perry Ward. I made an observation, I'm a very observative person. And I asked Counselor Hoyt, since all of us were riding in the car together, and I said, what happened to the President of Lawson State? You know, I said, what happened? And nobody knew in the car. The real reason why I was asking is because my nephew attends Lawson State. And, and I, and he got his little ticket, not from me. He got his ticket from the college itself. And so I said, well, what happened? He went on to tell me that the lady who actually spoke, that some people asked me about. And they said, well, who is that lady? I said, well, she works there. And I said, well, Hoyt, what happened to President's speech? He said, Scales, he wanted to give that young lady an opportunity of a lifetime to be shown nationally. He gave that to her and I said, wow. And I'm gonna tell you something. I was very impressed, if you went there, you had the opportunity to go, it was very organized. When you showed up, you got a number, I was told, and they want you to stand in the line. And when we all had to go through certain whatever, it was just, it was organized from beginning to end. So we love you, UAB. We love Lawson State too. And I'm glad that he got an opportunity for children who need to be inspired, need to be inspired, that the legacy that the western side, Birmingham, but the western side of Birmingham can say, my President came to my neighborhood, not the hood, but my neighborhood. He let me know that you matter too. Everybody matters. And when he starts saying, "Fiddy", and I said to the, I said to the Counselor Hoyt, I said, now that lets you know he's well-rounded. And my last thing that I wanted to say is this, Mr. President, I do thank you. I know you coordinated us being escorted and, and getting there the way we were. But I just wanted to say publicly, thank to you, thank you as well for making that happen. And I believe that you reap what you sow. You sow good seeds, it'll be returned back. But I did want to agree with everyone when they said about Dr. Perry Ward. And as a matter of fact, as a result of the President going over to Lawson State, they have now received more phone calls than they ever have in the past because people who ordinarily would overlook Lawson State now are looking to Lawson State. That makes a difference. Now that's what you empower for, is to empower. So if you're not empowering people, you being empowered really don't mean a thing at all. So again, I want to thank Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. President. And lastly, I want to thank the President of the United States because I've been following that man since 2004. I got my hug and I felt real special. So, thank you, Mr. President.
I'd like for Counselor Lady Scales to share with the council our telephone call because the implication is that I don't respect Ms. Scales and I don't treat her right. And share with the council our call.
Which one? We talked a couple, well, you want me to share holistically?
About the President coming and so forth.
Oh yeah, well, basically, in short, I called you Saturday morning and I asked you about, you know, if, when he's coming, what would happen with the council and so forth. And then when I called you back on Monday, I actually even came to your office. And I said, Mr. Mayor, what we gonna do? You still didn't necessarily know, but by the same token, you were willing to do what you could do in order to try to facilitate the council. So, yeah, I mean, you, you absolutely did that.
Your calling, I told you that I would do everything within my power to make sure that the council would be there, did I not?
Oh yeah, and, and, and let me just-
That you would be taken care of, did I not?
Yeah, well, let me just say this too, just for the record, say, is, is, is this too, that I will say, which has nothing to do with you, Mr. Mayor. But when you come out of the council meeting and you have a receptionist that tell you the White House called you, I'm telling you, I could have just peeled over. Yeah, because, because, no, well, I'm just talking about for the work I've done, not just to meet him. And I know that you said to me, Mr. Mayor, you said, be ready because they probably gonna talk to you about that payday lending. And, and I'm always Ready Freddie, Frederica however. But, but I, I was just really, really excited. And so I just wanted to make sure I acknowledged that this morning because I am, I'm very territorial. If I work on something, I'm gonna make sure that people know that Scales is on, on the Batmobile because we had too many payday loans over there on the east side and throughout Birmingham. And for the President, someone within the White House to say, you own the President's mind, he actually wants to meet you, that's, that's, that's something. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to give that clarity. And I do agree, thank you for Terry Sewell as well. She called me on Wednesday night to say, I wanted to make you, make sure that you and the council members had what you needed. Don't have no extra tickets, but just wanted to make sure you were straight. So I just wanted to thank everybody.
Counselor Tyson.
Well, I didn't get a chance to see the President. I gave my one ticket to my daughter. And I'm not complaining because I went up there with his wife, so I'm alright. But I do think that we should revisit that payday loan. That 2,000 feet is not far than, it's, it's just not far enough. And I didn't vote for it then, and I still think we need to revisit that and relook at their ordinance. It need to be further because they are opening up on the western side of town like fried chicken joints. It's, it's just like, it seems like they are just next door to each other. This one just opened up again over there at Five Point and it's four of them on the road now. So I think we do need to revisit that.
Alright. Mr. President, let me just say quickly, because I received several phone calls as to why the President didn't speak here, why he didn't speak there, why did he choose Lawson State? If you recall, about a month or two ago, the President announced that they were working on, and he mentioned it in his speech, about every community college should be free to students. Those remarks came out of meetings that President Ward, the President of Jeff State and my office have been having as to how we can make those institutions free to every student coming out of high school from the city of Birmingham. We shared that information with the White House and this probably was five or six months ago. And from that conversation, and it wasn't anything that the White House had on their radar screen until it was placed on their radar screen by Lawson State, Jeff State and the city of Birmingham. In fact, at the time that the President made the announcement, I got a call from President Ward saying, the President stole our ideas. But it's not, it's not a matter of stealing ideas, it's about putting it in the right place so it can be acted upon. And as the President said, if we have free high schools, we should have free community colleges as well. And we can do that so that every child will have the ability to get the education that they need right here in their hometowns and other hometowns across the country.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I agree. Let's move to suspend the rules for one presentation. So move. Counselor Rafferty.
Well, we are definitely gonna go out of this month of a woman with a blast. We've already been through three dynamic women and we're about to bring up the fourth one. Thank you. And Ms. Page, Mr. Page and Victoria, if you'll come forward, please. And this was on the presentations list last week. She attends the Alabama School of Fine Arts and the principal had pulled her back before she could do her presentation. And Ms. Heidi and Ms. Austin and Ms. Bridgette, if you'll come up as well to stand in support. Because this is our fourth up-and-coming strong woman this morning. And she's gonna need all of us to empower her. So, Ms. Page. So, Ms. Page.
Greetings, Mayor and council members. Um, my name is Tanisha Tarver Page, and I'm, um, a resident of District Two. I brought forth my, um, our daughter Victory Johnson, and this is Akiva Page.
Lord.
Um, as Ms. Rafferty said, um, Victory, Victory is a student at the Alabama School of Fine Arts, and she's a ninth grader. She's been dancing for, since she was five years old. And we got the opportunity, um, through ASFA to, um, participate in the Alabama Dance Council. Um, this year, actually, I wasn't gonna allow her to participate in the American Ballet Theater, because last year, we paid our $35 audition fee, and Victory didn't get accepted. So, this year, actually, um, the Dance Department Chair, Mr. Keener, paid the $35 for her to audition, and she got accepted. Um, so, we come before our city council, um, with the acceptance came tuition and room and board at the Alabama, um, excuse me, at the American Ballet Theater, it's in Austin, Texas. Um, being a citizen of Birmingham, I didn't know where we were gonna get the funds to actually, um, support Victory in, in participating in this lifetime event, because, like I said, last year, she didn't get accepted. So, this year, she did, and just praying and, and speaking to coworkers and friends, my coworker set up a GoFundMe.com account to help Victory, Victory's ballet journey. And, um, she's, she's a, um, she's a Birmingham City School, um, student. She started in Birmingham City Schools, and she got the opportunity to audition at ASFA at the seventh grade. And here she is. Um, Victory, would you like to say a couple of words?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I just want to say, like, I am so blessed to be in this position, to like, even just being accepted, like, I don't, I mean, just even being accepted, I mean, I don't have to have a scholarship, but I mean, just being accepted to like, one of the most prestigious schools, A B T is really amazing. And like, I'm very blessed to be in this position, so.
Um, so, we brought the flyers.
Well, my GPA is 2.5 also.
All right.
Um, we, we brought this forward, and we're, we're just asking our city, um, if, like our mayor told our president the other day when he was speaking, if we could get help, just a little help. Even if you blasted on your Facebook pages, Twitter, um, just get it out there to open up the hearts, to help us out. Um, we'd be very appreciative. Um, we're excited, because, as I stated earlier, the first time we didn't get it. But this will open doors to other opportunities, um, for Victory. And our city, because she's actually representing our district, her school, the city of Birmingham, and the sky's the limit. So, if we could just blast it, and if you have it in your hearts, um, to give, that would be wonderful. But we come before you and ask for your assistance. It takes the village to raise a child, and I'm asking my fellow villagers to help us out. So, here's the, um, the website, um, and I can also pass around, we'll pass out the flyers if, um, anyone would like to receive one, but thank you.
Nervous?
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Um, first of all, this is ballet. This is a national-recognized ballet opportunity for a student and a resident of our city. And funding or not, our blessings should go with her. And I wanted you to all know, um, the kind of women we are producing in this city, and, um, our efforts are going far. And I wanted to give you, Victory, and share this with your mother. Um, I have given out 300 copies of this book, um, and some of you have read it. Um, and this is the secret manual for Taking Over the World for Women, so do not share this with your father. It is called The Estra Effect, and it's The Seven Secrets of Self-Confidence and Influence. Um, Ms. August has read it, and Heidi will read it, and Bridgette will read it as well. But this is gonna make you a stronger woman, and the beautiful things you're going to do, make sure that you encourage and make everyone behind you be as beautiful as you. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Counsel Rafferty. Ma'am, Ms. Page and your daughter and husband, that is right, right?
That's correct.
Okay. I gave you to her, even if you didn't belong to her, I've been watching y'all in the back. Counsel Rafferty, come on around, it's your presentation. Listen, let me, let me say something. Uh, the goal is $5,000, is that right?
That's correct.
And here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna sow into it, because legally, the council, the city, can't make any donation on behalf, we just went through this long tutorial this weekend, so we notify the public, we can't do city dollars. But such as I have, give our unto you, okay? And so, your goal is 5,000.
Yes.
And what I'm gonna do, uh, in the Underground Railroad, Harriet Tubman said, "Friend of a friend," right?
That's right.
So, I'm gonna call some friends today.
Yes.
And I'm gonna ask them to sow into you, okay? And I believe that faithful that works is dead. You've done the work, Mama and Daddy.
That's right.
She's done the work to get in, and so now, you putting some legs to your face, right?
That's right.
So, I'm gonna sow into it this morning, and then, I'm gonna call some other friends. And when do you have to raise this money by?
Um, May the first, but-
May one?
May the first, but-
You'd like to have it before May one?
Well, May first is good.
Okay.
Um, because we've already actually had to pay into, um, the acceptance fee. But, um, she doesn't go until July, so we can donate up to, up until July.
Okay. All right, well, I just believe that a few of us might know a little friends, we don't have to wait to May.
That's fine.
Uh-huh, and so, that's why I asked the council to pull it up for me, and so, we're gonna, we're gonna do that. I just wanted to make sure that you, you knew that council members, wow, we cannot do it, mayor can't do it on, with city dollars, taxpayers' money, but we can do it on our own. And I'm gonna let the mayor do his own presentation. All I can tell you is that we like change, but we love the kind that folds, okay? So, thank you, Mr. President, and I want to let you know, I believe in you. You got a good Mama and a good Daddy. If they're willing to come down here in public and ask for money for you, don't ever forget that. You understand? Don't ever forget that. They didn't have to do that. It takes a lot of sacrifice and courage when parents have dignity to, to come before the public and say, "Can you help us?" You understand? So, when you go there and things get a little tough, just say, "Wait a minute. If my folk could go before a body of folk and ask them for some money, I'm in it to win it. I'm gonna take it. They don't have to give me nothing. The door been open, I'm gonna get myself in." That's your attitude, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Be in it to win it. All right, and Counsel Rafferty, thank you for bringing this beautiful girl before us, and I'm gonna look forward to you coming back and say, "We got it, we made it." Got it?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, God bless you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. President. Victory, Victory. I wanted to say, first of all, congratulations to you. Congratulations to your proud parents. Congratulations to Counsel Rafferty, who brought you up to see us. And, uh, it's interesting that you're here today, because, yeah, I think it was last week, I listened to a presentation on NPR, uh, and it was, uh, they were featuring the only principal dancer in the ballet that is black. And she was talking about the, you know, the challenges and the difficulties that she had encountered. And so, it's interesting that you're here today, and you're a ballet dancer, and I thought of her, and I thought that maybe you're following along, and soon, you'll be the next black principal dancer. And maybe by then, it won't be so unusual. But, uh, I wanted to say congratulations, and I'm glad you've got a GoFundMe site, because it makes it easy for those of us who want to contribute to do it. It was a smart thing to do, and, uh, I just, uh, wish you the best, because I know you'll do well.
Absolutely.
And thank you for coming before us today. It's not so bad, we're not, we don't bite.
Yeah, well, and, and I do appreciate our parents, um, come, I, I love the ballet. And matter of fact, um, when we were able to give to a different organization, one of the challenges that I, uh, put before, uh, the Alabama Ballet, is that they needed more African-Americans, uh, in there, that there were no principals, uh, that were, uh, dancers there. And, um, but I want to thank, I forget the young lady, she came from New Orleans, who used to be the director there. And, uh, and of course, she was concerned as well. Yeah, Jill, right. And so, uh, but she tried, you know, work on that. So, I'm just excited, uh, that you were, because it takes a great deal of discipline, uh, to be a dancer. If, you know, if I weighed 125 pound, I probably would have been one-two, you know? But, uh, it didn't work out for me, not with these jeans, okay? Uh, I had to blame my folk for that. But, um, but I just think it's wonderful. It, it really broadens your horizon, um, you know, it teaches you self-confidence, and, uh, and that's what we need, all of our girls. I raised a girl, and so, uh, and I know it works, because, uh, I see the results. And certainly, you're gonna see the results. I know you, uh, from somewhere, I, I thank you friends of my friends, I, I thank Catherine Frank Byers, I play. But anyway, uh, I'm proud, and counsel, you should be commended for bringing this young lady. And I'm gonna do like, uh, Scales, I'm glad you said, we can't give our, uh, funds with our discretionary, but I am gonna sow a seed, because I believe in young people. And, uh, and especially when they're going to represent us. Uh, and so, do know that I'm gonna make a donation, uh, towards that effort, uh, because I, I believe in what you all are doing. And I never forget, uh, young lady was working off, and Ms. McKinnon, daughter wanted to go to Altamont, and she was smart. Uh, but it takes money to go into that school. And so, uh, she developed a flyer, and just telling us about, um, who Laura was. And Laura is still, uh, a wonderful scholar, and now, she's getting ready to graduate this year from, from Berea College, and she's outstanding. And I just always think, I'm glad I sowed into this young lady's life early on. But I appreciate her parents for, um, for, uh, putting her before us and telling about her accomplishments. So, I really do, and I think you're gonna be great, wonderful. I'm gonna see you on Broadway, all that stuff, okay?
Thank you.
And so, uh, kudos to you all. Kudos to you, counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Go women.
Mrs. Clerk, we're ready to move on with the consideration of the consent agenda.
Consent agenda starts on page two, but I'm, one and two. Page three, item number six is on consent. Page four, you have items seven through 10 on consent. Page five, you have items 11 through 14 on consent. Page six, items 15 through 17 are on consent. Page seven, items 18 through 20 are on consent. Page eight, items 21 through 23 are on consent. Page nine, items 24 through 27 are on consent. Page 10, items 28 and 29 are on consent. Page 11, items 31 and 33 are on consent. And I think that concludes the consent agenda.
Mr. President.
Mr., uh, Mr. Protein, Counsel Abbott. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. On page, uh, two, item number three, vacation, I'd like to add that public hearing to consent.
Say.
Okay. On, uh, page three, item number four, I'd like to add that item to consent.
Um, Jack.
Page three, item number five, I'd like to add that item to consent. And, page 12, item 35, I'd like to add that item to the consent agenda.
Did you, did you add four?
No, it got objection. It had objection. It was objected to. Counsel Abbott.
Uh, yes, I wanted to ask if, um, we could remove item 24 on page nine and item 25. And then, did we place items 30 and 32 on consent? They're on pages 10 and 11. I would like to add those.
30 and 32, okay. All right, do you have any more?
Objection, 30.
All right. 32. All right, do you have any other? Counsel Scales.
That's all, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to make sure, uh, and I think we've already placed item number five on page three on consent, is that right?
It is right now, yes.
Okay. Page 12, item number 35, I think I heard that being placed on consent.
Yes.
I'd like to remove item four and six on page three, got a question about those. Page nine, item 27, have a question about that one. Page 30, item 30, have a question about that. Page 11, item 31.
You wanna remove all of those?
Yes, sir, please.
All right. Do any other council members?
Mr. President.
Counsel Abbott.
Um, I'd like to remove item seven from consent. Six and seven need to go to budget and finance.
Okay.
I think six has already been removed.
Do you have any on the first, budget and finance?
Well, at the appropriate time.
Okay, on number seven, will that, will that be back in two weeks? Because it's kind of time-sensitive, but can it come back in two weeks?
Budget and finance is on Monday, right? No.
No, it's next Monday.
Okay, so, can it just, just come back in two weeks?
Two-week delay, yeah.
Okay, all right.
All right, uh, do we have any other? Do we have any members of the public?
Mr. President.
Counsel Rafferty.
One other thing. On page eight, I just wanted to ask a question, um, on item 22 on page eight. Um, I wanted to ask how many proposals we got? It says the lowest and best proposal submitted. Um, were, were there more than one proposal, or was there only one?
Thank you. Um, Mrs. Abbott, Counselor Abbott, I should say, apologize. Train is a sole source, this is train equipment, and so, therefore, um, this, uh, equipment and the servicing of them was by train, is by train.
Okay, so, that means it automatically was the lowest and best proposal submitted, no matter what they said. Okay, okay, that was all I wanted, and it can stay on consent.
All right, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to the, to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda marked as a public hearing? You have a mover in a second on the consent agenda.
I move approval.
Second.
Give me one second, Mr. President, uh, to get Counsel, um, Scales' items off.
Okay.
Okay, that was, uh, Abbott, Robison.
Yes.
Think I got everybody. Okay, voting should be open.
Nope, we can't vote, Ms. Clerk.
Got the log back in, uh, from the system, but I'll go ahead and put everyone in for voting now. How, everyone wants to vote? Yes, I'll take it.
Listen, um, call for a vote, Ms. Clerk, all those in favor.
Okay. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, give me a second, record that.
You want to go log them in?
Counsel Rafferty is not here.
Yeah, thank you. Let me take her out.
That item passes. Um, next item should be item four.
Yes, Counsel Rafferty, save. Item four, okay. Item four, it's on page three, a resolution to accept the bid of Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Alabama, Birmingham, and approve the purchase of medical benefits, administrative services, and unit prices on file in the office of purchasing agent for a term of one year effective July the first, 2014, with the option to extend the term of agreement for two additional one-year periods subject to the availability of funds for the Department of Human Resources, this being the lowest bid submitted. Please note, this was recommended by the Health and Benefits Board.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second.
Abbott Roberson, Counsel Scales.
Yes, sir. Let me ask very quickly. Um, I know it's kind of slightly sensitive, so I guess my question is, is this the one that uh, I think Mr. Mayor brought up, that there's some kind of, um, I won't say judgment, but an order for us in this, in this item right here. Is that the one we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, that's why I wanted to have it removed because I wanted to make sure that if we were in compliance and really what this meant, uh, Mr. President, do we have someone that can kind of elaborate just a little in terms of what we're doing?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, do you have someone who wants to speak to that?
Um, other than generalities, I am not familiar with what's going on. Okay, we've got somebody here.
Good morning.
My name's Marilyn Johnson. I'm the benefits administrator. I've been in human resources now for a couple of months. And in June, Ms. Pope, HR Director, will go before Judge Raffio just to have what's more or less a confirmation hearing that will have to bid our insurance out every, the health insurance that is out every three years. But as far as the administrative services agreement, that is item number four on this agenda, uh, it simply executes the agreement that we're currently in with Blue Cross for the administration of our claims.
Okay. I did have one more question, uh, Ms. President. Has this been, and, and this is more or less for the chair of the public safety. Has it been before your committee? I remember that that was the last issue, the reason why we delayed it.
Right.
So were you satisfied with the information that was explained?
We were very satisfied and, um, uh, we had a, a great dialogue and discussion about this issue. And I think this is really, um, is attributed to last year.
It is.
Am I correct?
It is.
Uh, 2014.
Correct.
And so that's the, the road that they're traveling, uh, right now. And so, um, but we had no problems with it. And, and of course, um, and what has worked out well is the fact we've had the discussion early on. So we have no nuances, nuances, uh, when we move forward. So, uh, Madam, uh, Scales, it, it's been vetted.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. President.
We're ready to vote, Ms. Clerk.
Voting should be open.
Should be.
Still can't vote. Just call for the vote.
All right. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right, that item passes unanimously.
Rafferty.
Counsel Rafferty is absent.
Okay.
Uh, next item should be item six.
All right, give me, give me one second here. Item six. All right. Item six, a resolution, a resolution approving the agreement with CSX Transportation Incorporated in Jacksonville, Florida, in an amount now to exceed $32,434 inclusive of any reimbursable expenses to facilitate the development of the new at grade crossing enclosure at Sloss Visitor Center, Birmingham, Jefferson County, Alabama, between dot number 640237P and 640234U located between railroad mile post SG 736.63 and 736.66 project and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second.
Mr. President.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I move that we send this to Budget and Finance.
Second.
Ms. Clerk.
Okay, one second, please.
Ms. Clerk.
One, one second, I'm sorry. Um, I got Abbott and
Roberson.
Roberson and then the motion to, to committee.
Abbott and Roberson.
Abbott, Roberson, yeah. And what committee was that?
Budget and Finance.
Budget and Finance.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right, that item passes. It will be referred to Budget and Finance. Next item should be item seven.
Okay, item seven. Item seven, on page four, a resolution approving the appointment of Jones Law Firm, Birmingham, in an amount now to exceed $3,000 to provide title search and legal services for the condemnation of property for the Lawson Road Project and authorize the mayor to execute the appointment on behalf of the city.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second.
Mr. President. I move that we send this to Budget and Finance Committee.
Abbott and Parker. Go ahead. Go ahead.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right, that item will be referred to Budget and Finance.
That was Abbott and
Abbott Parker, Abbott Parker.
Okay, one second, please.
I want Abbott and Costello.
And that's Budget and Finance.
Yes.
My apologies, sir. Okay, everyone, this is Rafferty, she just came back. Okay. We're ready. Next item.
All right, call up item 24, 25, and 27.
24, 25, and 27. Item 24, on page nine. A resolution accepting and approving the bid of EFCO Incorporated Sanford, Florida for the purchase of mosquito control spray as needed at unit prices on file in the office of the purchasing agent for a period of one year and month to month thereafter before it turned out to exceed three years subject to availability of funds for the Public Works Department, this being the lowest bid submitted. Item 25, a resolution accepting and approving the bid of Clark Mosquito Control Products Incorporated, St. Charles, Illinois, for the purchase of mosquito control spray as needed at unit prices on file in the office of the purchasing agent for a period of one year and month to month thereafter before it turned out to exceed three years subject to the availability of funds for the Public Works Department, this being the lowest bid submitted. Item 27. Is that correct?
24, 25, and 27, yes.
Uh, we had 27 on consent. Let me take it off.
Yeah, it's not on, it was taken off consent.
I apologize. One second. All right, back up. Item 27. A resolution accepting and approving the bid of Restroom Trailer Solutions Savannah, Georgia, for the purchase of portable restroom trailer as needed at unit price on file in the office of the purchasing agent for a period of one year and month to month thereafter for the Public Works Department, this being the lowest bid submitted, meeting specifications.
All right, we have a mover and a second.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second.
All right. Do you have any questions?
Yes.
Counsel Rabbit.
Um, and I guess I'm directing this to the mayor because he is our, our chief. And Mr. Mayor, you can either look up or down at me. I don't really care. Uh, because I know you're listening, no matter where you're looking. But I wanted to make a comment about this mosquito spray. You know, we're out there spraying poison all over our neighborhoods. And we do it because our residents ask us to come spray poison all over their neighborhoods. Now, I think that rather than poisoning everything, that we should be educating the public as to the nature of mosquitoes. If you have buckets of water, saucers on plants, gutters that don't drain properly, mosquitoes breed in still, in still standing water. They don't breed in water that flows, so ditches don't matter unless the water's just sitting there. But mosquitoes also don't fly very far from where they're born. So if you've got a mosquito problem, it's either you or your neighbors that's causing it, probably unintentionally and without thought. But we need an education program more than we need a bunch of poison spewing out all over our neighborhoods. Because I don't care if the government tells us it's safe or not. The government used to think that radiation was safe. And we went around treating people, everything you could possibly have with radiation, till we found out it caused cancer. But for a while, they told everybody it was safe. So even though this poison that we're spraying, the government tells us it's safe, what if it's not? So I would prefer an education program of the city rather than this spraying for mosquitoes that we routinely do, which kills more than mosquitoes, by the way. So I just feel that, you know, the, the stance that we've taken is just to spray for them when we could educate our residents as to how they occur and maybe get some help in stopping them from occurring instead of just doing the spray business. I know when I'm out walking and that truck, I hear that truck coming, I run for home. And I'm not very much of a runner anymore, but I don't want to breathe that stuff. So I don't imagine that really anybody else does either. And, um, I'm concerned about honeybees. I'm concerned about us. I'm concerned about all the things we're killing with that spray. So that's just a concern, Mr. Pre, Mr. Mayor. And I was hopeful that your public relations people could maybe work on that.
We are, we're looking at several different educational, um, video pieces to do. One on recycling, uh, the other on environmental safety issues such as what you're saying now with mosquitoes. We're going to be sitting down with the Health Department to see if they have, already have some type of canned, uh, video that we can put on, online. Uh, or if, if they don't, we'll generate our own to put online and make available to our neighborhood officers and the general public and perhaps get some PSAs. But, uh, we, we are looking at that, uh, to deal with some of the issues now. You know, we've, we've gone back and forth and I think we use malathion. Is that what we use? And it, it is deemed safe as of this moment. Now, I understand what you're saying about radiation and all of that other stuff. As of this moment, it is being deemed safe. You want to address that? You're going to tell me we're using something else besides malathion?
We stopped using malathion quite, quite some time ago.
Oh, I see. I need to be educated.
The, the spray that we use now is, is safe for bees and, uh, some other things. So basically what it does for the mosquitoes, uh, it is, it erodes their wings. So if they can't fly, they can't bite. Uh, but it's, it's, it's safe for, for humans. And I'll, I'll be glad to provide some, uh, specs on the spray that we're using now currently.
But you are absolutely correct. Education and, and on getting rid of, getting rid of standing water is the best prevention. Uh, and everyone should take a survey around their homes to make sure that they don't have water in cans, tires, um,
Gutters.
Gutters.
Roof gutters that where your wa, that aren't done properly can hold water.
If you don't, if you don't clean out your gutters from the leaves and debris during the fall and winter, it retains water when the springtime comes and, and summer heats up. So it causes all kinds of problems. So, uh, we're, we're going to look into how we can educate the public.
Good, thank you.
Uh, Counsel Scales.
Some of this is also for the biscuits that we put into standing water. Uh, those mosquitoes lay eggs in the waters. Uh, the biscuits keep the eggs from hatching. So, uh, some of this is for, uh, those biscuits as well.
Counsel Scales.
Thank you, Ms. President. I had actually a question for you because I noticed item 27 was called up. Now, is that related to this mosquito issue that we're talking about?
No, it's just, we called up all these items or bid item. Go ahead, you can speak to it if you want to.
Okay, well, because it's still Public Works, Ms. President. The reason why I called it is because obviously instead of renting, uh, or leasing, um, the portlets, we are opting to buy them. And my question is to buy them to do what?
This is not a, this, this is a restroom trailer. It has like four units. Uh, the reason that we need that is oftentimes like our more and more crews. We have several crews working in the area doing lots. We found that a lot of time is spent transporting, transporting people back and forth to some restroom facility, like some fire station or to a library. If we had, this unit has, uh, four restroom stalls with hand washing facilities. So they'll be able to be more productive, to stay there on the site and get more work done by having this trailer. And we can move this trailer from site to site. Uh, so no one has to load them up in a truck and take them miles and miles away to some restaurant, restroom. And by the time they get back, uh, someone else needs to go. So it's all day process.
Mr. Medfield.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. See, when you say that, you know I like you, right? And I respect you. This sounds like the type of portlet we used to use in the entertainment business when we had folk that came in and you step inside and it already has all of this stuff laid out. Is that what that is?
It's, uh, very nice trailers, nice.
Oh, I can tell. That's why I'm like, no, this ain't about no Public Works. I mean, but I'm going to be quiet on that note. Yeah, because see, as you were talking, I was like, okay, now that, no, no, that's, no, no. I, I know if this is what I got in mind, this is what you use VIP style. And, and now I'm telling you now, it's like one of those trailer, the counselors need to know this. It's like a, 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 a trailer that you use, but it has all these different compartments that are already in it. And, yeah, it's, and you can deck it out however you need to. That, that's, that's the only reason why, you know, and that's why I started by saying I like you. Didn't have nothing to do with you. But I'm telling you, that's what that trailer is. That's what that sounds like to me. Uh, because you usually don't have to travel miles and miles to go to the toilet. You know why I know that? Because I make sure I keep up with where these Public Works folk are going to clean up at. And they don't know what I'm watching because they looking for that one silver car when I got more than one. And so I know that, uh, convenience stores and all that are usually not too far away. But I'm, I'm going to listen to what the council got to say because all I want to say this on the record, not to you, but to the powers that be. If District One needs to use these wonderful portlets when we have our music and movie festivals, I don't want to be denied the privilege of being able to use it because I know what you use them for.
It's not air conditioning, Counselor. Uh, we, it, it's, it's really needed. We want to be productive while we are there.
Well, I understand, but we buying it. And if we buying it, we can put an air conditioner on it. You'd agree with that, right? And I like it, still like it. I just wanted to educate the council.
Counsel Rafferty.
No, this had nothing to do with portlets. Um, I did wanted to thank the mayor. Talking about the mosquito problem because, um, Judge Cook has assigned an attorney to work on the issue concerning the pools. Because we don't have any city regulations concerning the pools. We usually defer it to, uh, uh, the Department of Public Health at Jefferson County. And Public Works needs to be empowered to enforce some stricter regulations on how people maintain their in-ground, above-ground pools or ponds on the property. That's also a, a serious problem that we haven't, uh, we haven't dealt with at all. So I just wanted to thank the mayor, Judge Cook, and, and now Public Works for, for, uh, Mr. Williams for working on that issue.
Counsel Scales, your second time.
Thank you, Ms. President. I have one more, Mr. Medfield. How many of these, and I'm just only looking at the way it's written, how many of these are we talking about purchasing? Because I notice it says purchasing, but then it says a period of one year and then month to month thereafter. So explain to me a little bit more, how many of these are we talking about purchasing? And then there's something that's going on that at that point it goes to a month-to-month basis. Can you explain that to me? I mean, first of all, if the mayor would give you authorization to speak to me, I just want to get that part.
It's one unit.
It's only one unit?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and, and Okay, and and so what is the month-to-month lease that's on this item? Do you know what I'm even talking about? You know what I'm talking about, Mr. President? Huh, okay.
Good morning, Bob Ryan, Director of Equipment Management. That language in twenty-seven is referring to that if the if the event city were to elect to choose to purchase another unit, that they would have the ability to do that without rebuilding for a certain period of time.
Okay, so what is that month-to-month then? What what is that about?
Tom, do you want to explain how we write that? That's that's language that's used to. To extend.
Oh, it's just standard language.
Yes, it's standard language.
Here's my last thing, especially when you're talking about portable restrooms. How do we, how are we gonna maintain it? How do we empty these? Obviously, they're gonna be used, so how how do we plan to keep them empty so that they don't attract flies and nothing else?
We we will have permits to empty it into sanitary sanitary sewer.
So the city is gonna be responsible basically for emptying those trailers?
And cleaning.
And so is this like obviously gonna be a mobile trailer that when you all have large projects that you're working on, then you just move it from site to site? Is that what you're doing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Tha- thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Protem?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. Actually, Ms. Minfield, I think we should purchase three more.
Yeah.
I mean, you think about the quadrants and and the height of the season, where we have cleanup going on, and we have to, if I'm not mistaken by law, offer our workers the opportunity to use, you know, the the facilities. So I mean, if if it's needed, and I think you should bring it forth sooner than later, we need to purchase three more. That way, we can provide that that opportunity to the workers while they're out there in the field. So that's just my thoughts. I don't know how we got so in-depth in this discussion today, but, you know, i- i- it's it's definitely needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Protem. I agree with what you just said. Counselor Hoyt?
Well, I just wanna say, I want a Cadillac restroom, so I'm fine. Okay?
Counsel, if I could just interject this, just so that the council does know, this is a water-driven system. You understand what I'm saying, that the commodes and the urinals, they are driven by water. It's not a chemical. It's a it's a water-driven system, so it will be maintained and kept clean. It'll be a good system.
Yeah. Thank you. We're ready to vote, Ms. Clerk. Item twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-seven.
Oh, look, it's working again.
Voting should be up now. Councilmember Tyson Scales. Uh, just voting on three items. That vote should be up.
All right, that item passes. Those items, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-seven. Next item, Ms. Clerk, should be item thirty.
Item thirty, which is on page ten. A resolution approving the payment to drapery specialist Montgomery, Alabama, in the amount of ten thousand dollars to provide exterior architectural lighting for the Democratic National Convention team on July the twenty-first through the end of twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen, in accordance with section three dash one dash seven of the Birmingham City Code.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Abbott Parker. All right. Counselor Scales?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I just wanted to get, because I was not at Budget and Finance, so I'd I'd like to get a little bit more information on this. I know I started getting some probably a couple of weeks ago. Excuse me, but I wanted to get a clearer understanding, and I see that Mr. Bernie is here. If it's okay with the mayor for me to understand a little bit more about what we're doing here. I know it's about lights and all that, but if you can say it yourself, Mr. Bernie. And then I have a question in regard to the funding source.
Good morning, councilors. To, do you have a specific question or just how do you want me to handle that?
Well, I guess he- he- here's what I I've struggled with from day one, is that what was the total cost of this item before us?
The total cost of this was ten thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
And the reason that it's here today is because we had used drapery specialist earlier in the, during the fiscal year. And because it ran over that ten thousand dollars, we had to bring that before you for your approval.
Well, that's what I'm saying. See, I see ten thousand. I thought the overall amount was nineteen thousand. Is that right?
Uh, no, I'm thinking that this is the only amount for this particular event.
Okay, because I remember, I recall nineteen thousand, which is the reason why I started asking, what in the world are we doing for nineteen thousand dollars? And then now I see ten, so I I'm, I don't know, maybe if this is a different item. But it is still related to the lighting, am I correct?
This is lighting for the DNC event when we brought them to town. This was, this was part of our pitch. This was lighting, drapery, and other things to enhance the vision of the city.
Okay, last question then. So where is this being funded out of in terms of the budget? Is it out of the money that we allocated, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Uh, that is correct. I think the, we actually came back and had some additional, had additional funds that were approved by council. This this is the money coming from the monies that were approved by council earlier.
I'm glad I have two people I like coming back to back. Thank you, Mr. President. I have no more questions, Mr. Bernie.
All right. Ms. Clerk, we're ready to vote.
Okay, voting should be up. That vote should be up.
That item passes unanimously. Next item?
This should be item thirty-one. A resolution approving the payment to Enterprise Leasing Company South Central, doing business at Enterprise Rent-A-Car for short-term rental vehicles as needed for the period ending September the thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, based on bid award contract by the State of Alabama, contract number four one fourteen oh five, T number T one ninety-one R.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Abbott Parker. Counselor Scales?
Thank you, Ms. President. On this item here, let me ask, is this for the city at large or does this include the council as well? And what is, what are we using these vehicles for? And I'm asking in light of what we just approved on last week about these car rentals and so forth. I'm just trying to get a better understanding in terms of what we are approving here today.
Okay, Counselor, this is a unit price bid for the entire city of Birmingham. So anytime anyone would need to lease these vehicles, we have a set price set aside for that. And then all this is done in an effort to make sure that we're getting the best price we can when we have a need for these vehicles. You also asked when we need vehicles. From time to time, we have dignitaries and other people coming to town that we need to move around. We don't have sufficient city stock to move them around, so this is how we use those vehicles.
So let me ask you something then, Mr. Bernie. Just like last week, those vehicles came before the council. Is that one of those items that was not folded into something like this item right here? And it was just a little oversight? Is that what that is?
Well, that actually gave rise to this particular item. Rather than having to come back constantly, that way we were able to just say, okay, let's do unit prices. So once you accept this bid, we're able to actually lease those vehicles for the period of time that the bid is in, is in.
And the council would have access to these same vehicles as well?
That is correct.
Okay, is this the lowest bidder, this particular company?
Uh, yes, it was.
How many bids did you accept?
Now, that I don't know. I have to refer that to purchasing, but they actually put it out for bid. And generally, when they bring it to us, it is the lowest responsible bid.
Okay. All right, Mr. President, thank you.
And it's a state bid also.
Thank you, sir.
We're ready to vote, Ms. Clerk.
Voting should be up. Councilmember Tyson. That vote should be up.
That item passes. Next item should be thirty-four.
Item thirty-four, same page. A resolution setting a public hearing May the twelfth, two thousand and fifteen, to consider the adoption of orders to amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham. Case number ZAC two thousand and fifteen dash three, to change zone district boundaries from QB two, qualified general business district, and R eight planned residential district to R two, single-family residential district filed by the city of Birmingham, Department of Planning, Engineering, and Permits for the properties located at nine fifty-one, ten fifty, eleven oh five, eleven oh nine, eleven twenty-nine, eleven forty-one, twelve oh one, twelve twenty-one, Springville Road, and nine fifty Fran Drive situated in northeast quarter of section thirty, township sixteen south one west and southeast quarter of section thirty, township sixteen south one west Birmingham. This is the first read.
Mr. President, I move approval.
All right, ready to vote, Ms. Clerk.
Okay. Voting should be up. Councilmember Scales is out. That vote should be up, sir.
All right, that item passes. Next item, Ms. Clerk. Move to suspend the rules for our, or our speakers.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Should be Lindsey Davis and.
Good morning, city council members.
Good morning.
Mayor Bell. My name is Lindsey Davis. I'm the pastor of Birmingham Restoration Ministries. I'm here today with my wife, Nanetta Davis. First, I want to say that I have been truly touched by the care of our children that I've seen witness here this morning. I just applaud all of you and everybody that's involved and everyone in their respective places. What we have here in Birmingham, City Councilman Mayor Bell, we have a Christian recovery outreach ministry called Birmingham Restoration Ministries. And here today, we're just wanting to introduce ourselves as a nine-month in-house recovery ministry. What makes us a little different from everyone else is that we don't charge for any initial intake in our ministry. And what it is, is a live-in ministry where we take people off the street that may be struggling with drug addiction, alcoholism, homelessness, whatever it is that they're sick and tired of, being sick and tired of. We are willing to take these type people into our homes. We have a men's home and a women's home located in East Lake, Birmingham. This facility gives them room and board. We give them food, clothing. We feed them. And we also nurture them in the word of God. It's a faith-based ministry. We also have meaningful work activity in our ministry through our fundraising activities. This ministry is based in three phases. Through the first phase, we get them to understand who they are, give them recognition of their worth in society, that they are somebody, and along with getting them abstinence from the drug addiction of their choice that they choose to indulge in at that time. The second phase is giving them responsibility and accountability through our fundraising activities. And all the while that they're growing through the process of of Christian growth, the way we organize it in our ministry. And the third phase, before they get ready to graduate, we do have an initial graduation, is them going with us because we travel to different places. We have restoration ministries all around the country. And we've been here in Birmingham for two years now. And so we're wanting the city of Birmingham to know who we are and what we're doing. At this time, we don't have government funding. We make all our our finances through donations. We have people or companies that sponsor us and do different things to help us be able to make finances to keep this type ministry going. And like I said, we've, since we've been here, we've seen the influx of people. Like, we walk through Lynn Park and we see people indulging in alcohol, drugs, and things of this nature. And then our ministry to raise finances, we go out on the streets and we tell people about our ministry. We pass out our literature and we ask for donations. This type ministry is needed in the city of Birmingham.
Can you wrap it up? Your time is up.
I'm sorry.
Just wrap it up.
Okay. Oh, okay. We understand this type ministry is needed, and we just want to say that we are here. Like Councilor Scales says, we're in this to win this, to be able to help anybody that's in need of help. Okay?
Thank you. Next speaker?
Travis Dean Wright.
That's Wright. State your name and address. For the record, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Travis Dean Wright. My address is fifteen forty-four Denison Avenue Southwest, here in Birmingham, of course. My issue here is to, I'd like to thank the council and Mayor Bell for allowing me to avail myself of the democratic process. And it's in that process where laws are manufactured, they're executed, and violators are punished. So it is the latter that I address you today, that we need some, my appeal to you is for more law, environmental police in our areas to combat the litter situation that we find ourselves in. Birmingham that used to be a magic city now has spiraled into a cesspool of degradation and disdain. And it is that disdain that bothers me today as a citizen of Birmingham. Oh, yeah, it'd be easy for me to get up and leave, but what am I gonna do about the problem? We need to eradicate the problem. And Ms. Abbott, I like what you said about preventing problems. And we won't have to do so much cosmetic stuff. So the way to prevent the problem of littering is to punish the ones that's doing it. This Mr. Williams, Charlie Williams, can pick up trash from here to the White House. They gonna continue to throw it down unless you do something about it. So mine is a matter of prevention. If we prevent litter from being thrown down, then maybe Mr. Williams can finish cutting the grass out there. He's got to take four hours to cut the grass and the other four hours to 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 mow the lawns. If we punish him, you don't have to punish but a few. I've seen, I I I've seen matters be taken care of. If we punish a few, if you do the time, you pay the fine, or you do the time. So we need, so my appeal to you, on behalf, now, I issued an appeal last night. I invited the citizens that were complaining, and there were many, to come with me today. I said, now, I've heard problems out of both ears. Now, y'all come and let's go try to find a solution to the problems. And I invited them to come. I don't see any of them here, from the western area or the west area. Okay, I see one. Well, I speak on behalf of them. So we would like to have some environmental police to come so that we can find these people that's doing this, so that we can try to eradicate the situation. It's time out for us treating symptoms. We need to cure this issue, and it can be cured. Birmingham can again be the magic city that it once was. And I'd like to get some assistance in order to do that. I thank Councilor Tyson. She worked tirelessly, and we all do. But we'd like some assistance, and I look at this big council, and even though it's a big issue, you all are big people, and I know you can do something for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hoyt.
Yes, Ms. Wright? Let me, let me thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I mentioned to the president this morning that we getting ready to go into this budget season, and I appreciate the litter patrol because I think that's, that too helps. But the real issue is having boots on ground.
Yes.
And we do need the environmental police. I hope that the mayor will consider making a recommendation to hire some additional folk. I think we have one enforcement officer right now, and so we need more.
I understand.
I mean, that's too much for, too much area to 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 cover.
Yes.
And I'm glad you mentioned that because I was at that meeting last night.
Yes, sir. I thank y'all for being.
And I'm glad you did what I suggested that we do. We come down and you talk to this council.
Yes.
I want to thank Councilor Tyson and Councilor London.
London.
Because we were all there, and we heard your concerns.
Yes, sir.
And we know we got at least one counselor who is particular about litter. You know, as I said last night, you can eat off the floorboard of his car. He's so clean. So, but we want this whole city to be clean because it's it's perception.
Right.
You know, people, if you clean up the city, then they'd be less likely to throw paper out the door. I mean, at the car and other places, but that's what it's gonna take. It's gonna take enforcement. And but we got to do our part. And let me just share with you, when I was at South Town, and litter was a real issue there. But what I discovered is that we were perpetuists of our own environment. And so what I did is had my maintenance folk, every morning, the first thing they did when they got to work was to go and pick up the litter. And I said, and once you pick it up, then I can know who are the perpetrators. And so once I figured that out, then I dealt with them. And it made, and right now, you go through, South Town is a clean site because, you know, we enforce that because it it changes the disposition of the neighborhood and of that community. So I appreciate you coming down. And, Mr. President, we need to get her to do a PSA because you have, you've told us so eloquently this morning. And, Mr. President, we need to get her to do a PSA because you have, you've told us so eloquently this morning that we need to get, because we need to help the mayor, help Public Works to have a message, but it needs to come from folk like you. You live here, you taking ownership and you coming down here speaks volumes.
Yes.
So, I'm saying that to you, Mr. President, we need to get on a PSA and anybody else who wants litter, go on and do that. So, I'm hoping that our PIO officer is hearing that and get your information so we can start a campaign. Let's clean up Birmingham. All right? Very good.
Thank you, City Council.
Council Lundey.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Wright, I too appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
I want to say a couple of things, however. I applaud the mayor and his administration for bringing forth this litter campaign.
Definitely.
One of the things I want to say publicly is that when, when Puka and Ray Ray get fined for putting this litter on the public streets and right of ways, that you not call down to the council office or to the mayor's office asking that Puka and Ray Ray's fine be waived. Because I'm telling you, that's next. They gonna, you know, the people who are, you know, contributing to this issue, you know, then we're gonna have people calling us saying, hey, you know, Ray Ray didn't mean it, he's apologetic. So, so, you know, we need to be mindful of that. Then, two, one of the issues, I think, is a fundamental problem and many people have reached out to me around the world via email and social media about a statement I said that if you love the Lord, you wouldn't litter. Well, you know, we know that the Bible teaches us that the earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof. So, I made that statement in relation to that. And we have to remember that it doesn't cost you anything to be clean. You know, we just got some nasty folks with nasty mentalities. And it's unfortunate, but we're spending money because people are nasty. They're stepping over trash to get into their homes and into their cars when they could easily not perpetrate the crime. People coming into our city are hurting us as well. So, I say all that to say, I just want to bring it to bear that, you know, it's within us. Doesn't cost us anything. We don't have to spend a dime to alleviate litter. All we have to do is not perpetrate the crime. It's, it's, it's a mindset. And one of the things that I'm proud about this council is that it is a new paradigm. And this city is going into new avenues. Birmingham is about to become the best Birmingham it can be and I'm excited about where we're heading. And as the world comes into Birmingham over the next few years with the events that we're bringing here based on the mayor and this council, I'm excited about our possibilities, but it would be for naught if we continue to throw litter on God's green earth.
My point exactly. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for coming down and I want you to know that within our Public Works Department, we have ten inspectors and they, they play the role of the environmental police. And we have three other positions that are, are, are within the environmental police. But more importantly, it's not just a matter of cleaning up after somebody litter. You're absolutely right, we gotta punish folks. And that's what the Litter Cam initiative is all about and, and council, we're gonna ask the council to help fund that. We're asking neighborhoods out of their discretionary funds to help fund that so that we can make some example out of some of these people. And I think once we do that, then people will get the message that litter would not be tolerated. So, I appreciate you coming down.
Zero tolerance.
There you go. Thank you. Council Tyson and Council Abbott.
I just wanted to thank Ms. Wright. She stay around the corner. Ms. Wright and Ms. Cook, we are always out picking up paper. And she is a counselor.
That doesn't think she's too good to pick up paper out of her community. And I really respect her and Ms. Cook for actually helping me with the litter problem that we are having in District Six and all over the city of Birmingham.
Thank you. Council Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm really happy to hear so many people getting on board about litter. You know, our environment is all we have and if we keep on trashing it up, well, it just isn't gonna be a good place to live anymore. You don't go to the surrounding municipalities, you don't go to Homewood or Mountain Brook and see all this mess. Even an animal doesn't foul its own nest, but we do. So, you know, one of the things that I, I think is that if, when I walk down the city streets of Birmingham, if I see litter, I actually pick it up and put it in the trash can. We have plenty of trash cans in Birmingham. They're expensive too, so we ought to fill them up. If everybody would do that, we wouldn't have a problem anymore. We could save a lot of money and Public Works could be doing other things that we're interested in. You know, everybody has to do their part. And so, I hope that, you know, I know the people who throw their beer bottles out the car windows and their McDonald's bags aren't listening to this, but certainly, they have friends who might say, hey, you know, don't do that. Take it home with you, put it in the trash. We don't have to throw everything out our car windows because I think that's where a lot of our litter comes from. People drive around in the cars, they don't want that stuff in their car, so they toss it out and say, the city will pick it up. Well, that takes all of your tax money to have somebody do that. So, I just, I'm glad that we're, we're really focusing on this and I appreciate all my colleagues and the mayor and Public Works. You know, it's a group effort and, you know, we drive down every Sunday afternoon to the Warrior River to my brother's place. It's not just a Birmingham problem. I mean, there's so much litter along the road sides of those roads, it's just embarrassing. Beautiful environment. The only thing that could make it uglier is if we had billboards there, just litter everywhere. So, I'm, I'm excited that we're, we're, we're moving in the right direction and I hope everybody gets on board. The next time you see a piece of trash that somebody else threw out, stop and pick it up. You know, every individual can make a difference. Just ask Auntie Litter. She'll tell you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Should be Ernestine Washington.
Ms. Washington.
Oh, yeah, come on. Good morning, Mayor.
State your name and address for the record.
My name is Trivia Barnes, Ms. Ernestine Washington. We're here with Church Without Walls in District Six.
Can you speak in the microphone, please? Are you speaking for Ms. Washington?
Yes.
Okay. State your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Trivia Barnes, fourteen sixty-nine Pearson Avenue. We're here on behalf of Church Without Walls, District Six. Every year, we bring our youth down to the council so they can get a feel of what's going on in the City Council meeting. Beatty, can you hear me? They get a feel of what's going on.
Yeah, but you need to come closer so you can speak in the microphone.
To help educate and get these students to learn and appreciate what's going on in their district, in their city, and to help them become more better and responsible young human beings. It's a struggle, but we're working with them. And I think a lot of them has really enjoyed sitting in here this morning, listening to what's been going on. I know I have and I was honored to be able to go to Washington with Ms. Tyson last week. And it motivated me so much to come back to put forth a little more energy to help our young women because, in fact, it was such a positive inspirational thing for me. And it would give me a little more strength to come back and try to help our young ladies. Since this is ladies' month, it will come back and help us to help our young ladies.
And just to add to what Ms. Barnes has said, I'm Ernestine Washington. And as we leave from here today, we're on our way out to pick up trash.
Council Tyson.
Okay, we're like, we just started.
Hold your stand.
Community Church Without Walls.
Hip Hill.
Shades Valley.
Reno.
Biden Field.
Irondale Meadow.
Shades Valley.
Parker High School.
PD Jackson O.
Jones Valley Middle School.
AKA.
But, wait, don't leave, come back. These are, stop being so shy, you're not shy in the community.
Homewood High School.
Thank you so much.
Okay, wait, hold up. This is a group of young people that's in our District Six. We basically, after school, we are after school programming on, on a weekend program. We teach them how to be responsible as citizens in Birmingham. These, some of these students will be going to Black, with Black Youth Vote up to DC. We also teach them through the Fresh Air Camp. We teach them just a number of things. They are taking cooking lessons. Who's in the chef class taking cooking lesson? We have a couple of them in, in the cooking class. But this program was set up because they wanted to have something to do. And all children are not bad and, you know, and I know we get a bad rap for that on the western side of town, but these children want something out of life. And we have set up a program and we partnered with Church Without Walls, this was way before I became a City Councilperson, that this has been built over the years. We have targeted children that we feel like would fall between the crack and we have put them in Holy Fountain High School because we, we, we see the need and we do not want to lose our young people. So, we pull them out, well, we seen that they were skipping school where they could get an extra, you know, a uplift and an extra chance on, on life. So, this is the type of program that Ms. Ernestine run. Ms. Ernestine make sure the children get to school. We have vans, we have three vans. She make sure they get to school. We make sure the citizens get to the doctor. She do doctor's appointments, church rides, whatever they need, that they cannot get transit. She is there for our community and she's irreplaceable and we will keep her. And I want to publicly thank you, Ms. Ernestine. I would like to thank the children for the work that you do in the community. And we are going to, for spring, our fest, we're gonna get our tickets and stuff and pass them out today and we're gonna have a survival.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Next speaker.
W.A. Casey.
Mr. Casey.
Good morning, I'm Willie A. Casey, nine forty-one Fifth Street West.
Speaking in the microphone.
To the council. Well, thank you. This is my third time here. I've attended three of the meetings since that time. I hate to be redundant, I sound like John the Baptist in the wilderness. If you got a plan, the only person who has a plan is the coach and the quarterback, you don't have a plan. It's a good plan, but I still say you need to get the religious and the preachers together, faith-based ministers together, to understand the plan and get them to get these five thousand people down the bow wire or whatever, then we have a plan. The plan need to be exposed. I thank you, I appreciate you. I've been in real estate over, since nineteen eighty, I've managed over a hundred and some agents, but the plan need to be, need to be exposed beneath all this real estate. And I think one of the important things that you all have done and can do is the future. So, we get people to understand what the plan is, now we have a plan. I want to thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Bridgette Williams. That was earlier. Mr. Hill?
Yes. He was in there.
Cedric Hatcher.
Raymond Hatcher. State your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Good morning, my name is Cedric Hatcher. I reside at twenty-three hundred Fifth Avenue North, apartment five oh five. On last week, Mr. Mayor and City Council, we, I think truly the Lord shined his light on the city of Birmingham when the President came over there to Lawson State Community College. I mean, he gave a great message, but he missed a great opportunity. He missed a great opportunity. Where you going this morning, bro, Sid? With all those African-American kids in that room, all those young black future Obamas and future NBA players and NFL players and doctors and lawyers. Personally, I think he should have took time out to talk about what Dr. King called three of the deadliest sins in America. Number one, war. Somebody said war, war, bro, Sid. Number one, racism. Somebody said racism, racism, bro, Sid. Number three, poverty. Why war? What is it good for? Absolutely nothing. Racism is a cancer that eats up the spirit of the man, the heart of the man, to hate because of the color of his skin. Poverty. Wherever you find poverty, you gonna find all kind of dysfunctional behavior. Matter of fact, crime is at the end of poverty. You gonna find addictions, drugs, alcohol, homosexuality, homeless, fatherless children, no father in the household. Dropout rate gonna be high, incarceration rate gonna be high. Come from poverty. And so, why should the President hit on that? Because you around all those black kids. It was a time to talk about race in America. With the death of Trayvon Martin, Eric Garner, Mike Brown, Renisha McBride, Jordan Davis, and lately, a young black man found hung in a tree. Who go to a casino and take some sheets with him and hang himself on the way home? This is a conversation y'all, we keep overlooking in America, race. We can no longer overlook it. Now, if I had an opportunity, I'm getting on out of here too. If I had an opportunity, y'all would be on that jet with, with the President that day. You know what I would ask him? Mr. President, I need to ask you a question. How is it in America, Michael Vick can kill some dogs and go to prison and do three years? But all these young African-Americans got killed by mostly police officers. If it ain't black on black killing one another, it's the white man in a uniform killing my brother. With no justice being done. It ain't justice for all, it's just for y'all. And somebody need to talk about this here. Racism is a cancer in America. In America, y'all, we got to sit around the round table and talk about, stop killing our root because when you kill the root, it won't be no fruit. When you kill the root, it won't be no fruit. You killing our next Barack Obama. You killing our next Michael Jordan, Tiger Woods, Magic Johnson. We got to talk about it sooner or later, y'all. We gotta stop all this stuff, tell me, I went there, I was with him, I was with her. That ain't about nothing. We losing a generation of young people because somebody scared. I usually put it this way, everybody coming out the closet but the saints. Where we gonna stand up? We stand up for everything. I'm getting on out here. When you talking about my mama, I kill you back when I was in school. When you talking about my brother, I get mad. When you talking about my church, I get mad. But who gonna get mad about Jesus?
Ms. Hatcher.
Everybody stand up for political rights, but you won't stand up for biblical rights. I'm gone.
Thank you. Next speaker.
That concludes our speaker.
All right. Council Boy. All the new business.
You're so kind, bless you. The next, well, Fairview Neighborhood Association meets on Tuesday, April the seventh, at six o'clock at the church at Fairview. Thomas Neighborhood Association will meet on Tuesday, April the seventh, at six thirty at Mount Hebram. And the Searcher Park Neighborhood Association will meet on April the seventh at the Five Points West Library at six o'clock. And the next Public Safety Committee meeting is gonna be April the sixth in these chambers here on third floor. Just wanted, again, to thank all those residents who came out last night and I want to thank Mister Charlie Williams who was there addressing their needs. Really do appreciate that. I think they appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, that you sent him there to talk about the litter control. I think that's a good start. I think it's a great program, but I still think we need environmental police to enforce it. And, and I will sign on as one who would support the program. However, but I do believe we need some boots on grounds to, to further that. Again, Mr. President, thank you for the access that we had on last Thursday. I just felt good, you know, to see all the council that were there. It was just wonderful and Council Abbott was there and smiling, absolutely, head up, camera out, taking pictures. It was just wonderful for the city of Birmingham. And then, I saw Ms. Lawson State. She just left here a while ago and she was on, she was in the back on national television, looking beautiful and poised.
The President stopped to speak to her.
Huh?
Said the President stopped to speak to her.
I bet he did, yes. But, but, you know, she, you know, just so poised, you know, posture is so good. I tried to tell my niece and nephew, you know, you need to look like somebody when you walk, you know? I remember being a kid, walking down the street and somebody say, are you in Hackens? That's my mother's maiden name. I said, yes, ma'am. Said, I know, said, because you walk like one. That's my mother's maiden name, I said, yes ma'am, said, I know, said, because you walk like one. And so, we got to walk like you, you know, like you somebody. And so that young lady has represented the institution. Jerry Albright did an excellent job in welcoming the President to Lawson State. I didn't want that to go by, because she really did an excellent job. And then the woman that was a member of the NAACP, who actually introduced the President, she was awesome. And I looked at her, looked at her disposition and she wasn't nervous or nothing. And if she was, I couldn't tell it, because she was on it, shared her story. And I always want to thank Counsel Scales for your work on this and actually, and, because it takes a collective working towards this end. And of course, when I chaired Economic Development, we started that process. But the moratorium came under your leadership. The Bible says, one plants, another waters, and another reached the harvest. And so, but I'm glad the President want to talk about that, because it's something that is plaguing our community. Our folk are taking advantage of something that should be good, but ends up being a detriment to them on the long haul. Because, you know, charging somebody four hundred something percent on the dollar is just ridiculous. It is absolutely ridiculous. You could never get yourself out of a hole like that, I do know that. And I know, having been a housing counselor at one point in my life and having to, you know, come in, I had a young lady come in one time when I was working out in the county. And she about five-two, and I ran a credit report on her. And I said, you want me to do all this? And I stood up, I'm six-three. It hit the ground, the bottom of the sheet hit the ground, I said, you want me to straighten this out? But she had gotten herself in a hole. And so we began to write and asked the folks to reconsider her debt and what have you. And so, but it makes a difference where you got advocates. But we got a power that we have, and it's called the legislative body of this city. And so what we need to do is change it, because it is really reaping havoc on our community. But again, Mr. President, thank you so much for allowing us to speak today. And I think it's been a great meeting, a great week. I'm still trying to come down from the high I've been on with the President and all the wonderful things we've experienced this past week. It's just been great. And it just, you know, and the mayor did an excellent job on his speech. And I saw him up there all poised and, you know, really connecting with the folk. That's good leadership. And, you know, I'm just the kind of person, if you do good, I'm gonna tell you. And if I think you're not doing good, I'm gonna tell you that too. But I think that's the way the world works, that's what we teach our children, and that's what I employ. And, but I think, overall, I think Birmingham is really poised to be something wonderful. And I want to thank you administrative staff, y'all some awesome people, and you get it done. And I know it's hard sometimes, John, but you, you know, you getting it done. You know, it's a process, but it gets done. At the end of the day, Ms. Teresa, you know, I mean, y'all get it done. Never forget, Ms. Teresa, when I had an issue next door to me, folk had built this place and, you know, we called the police, I mean, called Ms. Teresa and she straightened it out and saved my property value. So I really appreciate that, I've never forgotten that, but you all do an awesome job. Tom, I know it's not, it's not a thankless job to be the director of finance, but we do appreciate having your acumen in that office, in that department, so, all of you. And I started calling out the Ms. Bernard, is the best I've seen. So we just appreciate the work that the city does on a daily basis. And Mr. Thatcher, and you sir, doing a great job.
Counsel Tyson.
Helen, you done a great job. Greg.
Monday, April the sixth, Paly Neighborhood will be meeting at four PM at the Henry Crumpin Recreation Center. Glen Iris Neighborhood will be meeting at the Catholic Church at six-thirty. Tuesday, April seventh, Oakwood Place will be meeting at Harrison Park, four PM. Mason City Neighborhood will be meeting at Henry Crumpin Recreation Center at four-thirty, April seventh. PIC meeting will be held April the eighth at four PM, Conference Room D and E, please have all your submissions. No later than Thursday, the second, by three PM. We have had a great turnout for our third Financial Freedom Program Workshop at New Pilgrim Baptist Church. We will not be there for Easter Sunday, but after Easter Sunday, on the twelfth, we will be back at New Pilgrim Baptist Church, James Brooks, Reverend James Brooks is the pastor there for our financial workshop. And it's just, we just really have been having a great turnout, you can go to my website, sheletyson.com, in order to pull up the calendar. We were going to host an Easter egg hunt, but we're gonna postpone it because it's supposed to rain this evening and tomorrow, and the grounds will be drenched, and so it's no way for us to have that. The Birmingham Planning Commission will be meeting tomorrow morning at eight-thirty here in the City Council Chambers to discuss the Western Area Framework Plan. We're asking everyone to please come out to see the final plan, because more than half of my district will be in that, our plan, so you need to come out and support it. Oakwood Place will be having an Easter egg hunt Thursday, April the second, four PM. Graymount Neighborhood will be at Harrison Park, Graymount Neighborhood will be having an Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April the fourth, at Legion Field, from ten to noon. And also, I wanted, I don't know who I need to direct this to, I have one more announcement. There will be a citywide baptism, this might be right from where I need to talk to this before I ask you to something else. On Saturday, April the fourth, it will be at ninety-fourty River Parkway East in front of the new Fitness Center. They're asking, in Daughter Jungle, they're asking for everyone to come out. It's open to the public, if you are interested in getting baptized, never been baptized, ready to be saved, come out, or you can get some spiritual guidance. I wanted to ask President Austin, how many tickets did we supposed to get to see the President?
I believe we received one ticket apiece.
Oh, because I know some councils got three, some got two. And I just wanted to know, whether I didn't hold my mouth right or something? The reason I only got one? And then I had to let my, I let my daughter, because I've seen the President several times. But, if everyone supposed had gotten one ticket, everyone should have gotten one ticket. I don't think it's right, because you gonna make me feel like you're picking on me. And I, I'm not gonna participate in that, and I don't want to be bothered with it. Because, you don't know whether I'm married or not for real, because I don't tell you, that don't mean I'm not. And if everyone else could bring their spouse, how you know I ain't got one, I didn't have a man I'm on to bring. You know, and I just think it's wrong for, if you gonna give one ticket to each one of them, each, every person should have got one ticket. But I know councils that got, from the city councilor chambers, got two tickets and three tickets, and it's not right. And I really don't appreciate it. And if y'all want to be saying that we all together, you be together on everything, just don't be together on things that's gonna be towards you. And you know, you say we all a team, okay, let's play as a team, don't just play as a team when it's your game. Because all of this is all our games, and I don't appreciate it.
Counselor, thank you for recalling you, Counsel Rafferty. Each council member was given one ticket to the presidential speech and of those council members that receive additional tickets, they have relationships that go beyond what we have here at City Hall, and that's how they were able to get them.
I just got a text from Lawson State and they said that council members receive three tickets.
Well, that's not true. But go ahead, that's not true at all. Counsel Rafferty.
Thank you, Counsel Tyson, for making the statement. Thank you. Neighborhood meetings, Thursday, April second, Eastwood at Eastwood Library, six-thirty PM. Tuesday, April seventh, Overton at Macedonia Baptist Church at six PM. Tomorrow, there will be a joint Transportation and Communications Administration and Education meeting at four PM in Conference Rooms D and E. Our regular monthly business, however, of the Transportation and Communications Committee will be held on April fifteenth at twelve-thirty, because we do have pending business, but this is a special call, joint meeting tomorrow. And we'll move through everything as expeditiously as possible. I will say, Counsel Tyson, that there were people displaced because of the extra tickets. And that was very uncomfortable. But it was not the, it was not the design of the administration to cause that problem. It's, neither the President nor the Mayor. It was not their design. But it was an awkward situation, to say the least. However, I do want to say that the guy with the mic, and what was the song that all the men in the room sang? To us women? Let's Stay Together? I know you were singing, because I was up in the bleachers, so, Robertson, I couldn't tell.
I was listening.
You were listening, that was a fine, fine chorus going on in that room. I was very, very, everybody was actually bonding, because we had to wait for so long. So, but the gentleman with the mic, everybody was so on point, waiting for the President to come out. It was really funny when the mayor came out, because everybody thought he was the President, everybody was screaming and yelling, and then all of a sudden, the mayor came around the corner, waving his hands in the air, but he looked great. I do want to wish everybody intentionally be on your guard tomorrow, Happy April Fool's Day. Counsel Abbott, I've been making some plans and reading up on things. And also, next Tuesday, I will not be here. We have an Alabama League of Municipalities session, that'll be, a training session in Montgomery that'll be going on, as well as I'll be participating in the Transit Symposium and Stand Up For Transit Day. And I am one of the guest speakers in Montgomery on that. But I also wanted to make sure everybody knew to please celebrate my second favorite holiday. Of course, my first is International Talk Like a Pirate Day. My second favorite holiday is International Pillow Fighting Day. So Counselor, if things get out of hand during council meeting, please understand, the weapon of choice next Tuesday is a pillow. And Counsel Robertson, you can take that one home next Tuesday evening. That should be, uh... No, at home, take it home with you. That's the holiday that keeps giving, no matter where you are. So, thank you, Mr. President, that's all my announcements.
Counsel Lundie.
Thank you, leadership. I want to remind everyone that the April thirteenth meeting of Economic Development is council. We will have a special call Economic Development meeting on Monday, April twenty-seventh. Get your items submitted to Jose Perry by Wednesday, April twenty-second. So, Economic Development will meet Monday, April twenty-seventh. All items are due to Jose Perry by Wednesday, April twenty-second, at noon on that day. Thank you, leadership.
Counsel Scales.
Thank you, Mr. President. As always, I want to thank the citizens of District One, as well as the city of Birmingham, for affording me the opportunity to be their voice. On this upcoming Thursday, we do have two neighborhood meetings. The first is Echo Highlands Neighborhood Association, they meet at seven PM at Wynwood Baptist Church on Wynwood Road. Secondly, we have at seven o'clock, the Spring Lake Neighborhood Association, and they too meet at the Springville Road Library. Again, those are both at seven PM. Want to kind of weigh in very quickly, especially being that this has been brought up. Let me just say that last week was a very exciting week, I think, just for the entire state of Alabama. Just the fact that you have your Commander in Chief in Birmingham, but in the state of Alabama. And, you know, I agree with what has been said previously, which I was an absolute supporter of the President, which he was a Senator at that time, two thousand and seven. And so I think that it's a great day, anytime a Commander in Chief lands into your city, it always makes a difference. And I say that Rome wasn't built alone, but it certainly wasn't built in a day. And that's one of the things that we have to work through in government. But I don't want to jade the moment, but I will just digress a minute to say this. It was the White House that made sure that council members received tickets to be able to go. Certainly, all of us would have liked to have made certain that we could have what we wanted. But I agree with you, Mr. President, when you said about those external relationships that were had. But it was the White House, because if I have to be very candid about it, I saw a lot of department heads, and I didn't see committee assistants, okay? But it was what it was, so I'm grateful that the White House thought enough to make sure that we had tickets to go, even if it wasn't the desired amount, but I'm grateful. I do want to say this too, this payday lending, payday loan, title loan issues has not died. It's still on the horizon, we do have something in the legislature right now. Senator Orr is sponsoring a bill, Senate Bill one-ten, to try to get a database and to establish a cap, hopefully, on this bill. So there are a lot of things that we have in the state legislature, a lot of things that are on the horizon. And like I shared with Mr. President, it's our job to tell the story, what we're doing on your behalf. You don't know unless we let you know, but you deserve to know. And so, I'm just happy to know that we're in that vein, we're moving forward. And I did just want to say this, April sixth, we'll be at Huffman High School. Got a wonderful assembly program that's, ever since I've been back from Harvard, that I've been implementing some things in my district, particularly with my students. So Mama Scales Babies, Here I Come, I can't wait to see you on Monday. And like I said, Mr. President, as a collective body, I do want to say thank you for the items that I clearly saw on the agenda today about the three parks, or two parks, that are in the district. Bradford Park, Grayson Park, those park improvements, all together, that's a half a million dollars right there. And then we have the forty thousand dollars that I did see for the East Pinson Valley Park. Can't wait to see the passing of Echo Highlands and the bond money going into that. So without further ado, thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President, and as we gathered again last week with the President of these United States of America, we were at the only historically black college and university in the city of Birmingham limits. As there were some statements made earlier, the presiding council member of that district, in which Lawson State, is actually present. I was involved in meetings that were unknown to others in preparation for last week. With the President of that institution, making calls on behalf of my district, to help support the efforts of the President coming. So you cannot discredit the external relationships that you have to help bring whoever you want to bring to be a part of history in our city. And I am also, kind of be honest with you, I'm kind of at a highlighted moment in our city to receive the Commander in Chief and to have a discussion that we're having today is almost, to me, degrading. And so I'll leave it at that, but it's truly a great day. And I was glad to have my external relationships to make my own arrangements that my family, my spouse, and my children could experience seeing the President of these United States of America. Now, at Lawson State on next week, looking forward to sponsoring another White House initiative, along with Lawson State Community College, on April ninth, from six to eight PM. The White House Initiative on HBCUs, I'm a product of HBCU, Counsel Lundie, Counsel Ahoyt, attended historically black colleges and universities. We're gonna have a summit discussion with the National Education Association, along with the Alabama Education Association, and Alabama State Birmingham Metropolitan Alumni, concerning our HBCUs and how they need to exist, looking at potential partnerships. That will be held at Lawson State's on their campus on next week. That will be held at Lawson State's on their campus on next week, preserving fifty years after Selma, preserving our HBCU legacy. And we look forward to welcoming people to come out and support that. A couple of personal announcements. I'd like to wish my wife, Niva Brooks Roberson, a happy fifteenth anniversary. We'll be celebrating our anniversary on tomorrow. Fifteen years of marital bliss. I love you, and hopefully continue for a hundred and fifteen more. And also, in twenty-four hours, I hope to be a new uncle, and Niva will be a new aunt. My sister will be induced at labor at four o'clock today. And I will have another nephew, hopefully, in the next twenty-four hours. Talon Jacob Aguilar. I wanna congratulate Shayla and her husband Travis, and also my other two nephews, Tyson and Thompson, on a new addition, and their little brother that will be here by tomorrow. So we got a lot going on in the Roberson family on April Fool's Day, wedding anniversary, and a new addition to the family tomorrow. Announcements will be Jones Valley Neighborhood Meeting will be Friday, April third, at four o'clock P.M. Pauley Neighborhood Association Meeting will be Monday, April sixth, at four o'clock. Grisilla Heights Neighborhood Association Meeting will be Monday, April sixth, at six. West Goldwire Neighborhood Meeting will be Monday, April sixth, at seven. And Oakwood Place Neighborhood Association will be Tuesday, April seventh, at four o'clock P.M. Thank you, Mr. President, and that concludes my announcements. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Counsel Rafferty.
Madam, can I bring this item up under Ms. Abbott's report?
Yeah.
Sure.
Go ahead.
On item six and seven of the agenda, we'd like to ask the council to reconsider those two items. One, item seven, is authorizing Mr. Jones, Attorney Jones and his firm, to condemn some property that's holding up a multimillion dollar project. We're up against, we've been holding up this project for some time now, because one of the property owners has refused to sell the property. All the other property owners has agreed, but this one property owner has not. We're trying to get into a position where we can go and condemn the property, so we can move on this project. It's been pending for quite some time now, and we're afraid that we're gonna lose that opportunity if we don't go ahead and condemn the property. The other item, item six, is in conjunction with Sloth Furnace. And what the holdup and delay has been, and I'll let Andre speak to it, is that CSX has to give its permission for us to cross the right of way of the railroad track. And they've been, I can't say they've been dragging their feet, but just the process by which they go through their internal operations has delayed this project to the point that the project is almost completed, but we, we can't give them occupancy until we get that issue resolved, and they're waiting. Now, anything else you wanna add, Andre?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the mayor did ask for these to be reconsidered. And I don't have a problem with reconsideration, especially if there's a good reason and there are enough council members here to make a decision. But of course, I did ask them to be more timely in the future and get these things to the Budget and Finance Committee, because there has been time when this could have been taken care of. But that being said, Mr. Mayor reminded me that no one was perfect, and I certainly agree with that. So I would like to move at this time that we reconsider items six and seven.
Second?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And now I move approval.
Second?
Of both?
Item six and...
Six and seven.
Item six and seven. Ready to vote, Ms. Flirt?
Okay. Voting should be up.
It's for item six and seven.
That vote should be up.
All right, that item passes. Those two items, six and seven. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
All right, let's move on with Counsel Abbott's report.
Oh, yeah, that, that little thing. Well, it's a very short report. The next Budget and Finance Committee meeting will be Monday, April thirteenth, at four P.M. in Conference Rooms D and E. Submissions are due before Wednesday, April eighth, at twelve noon. Last Thursday, of course, we've talked about President Obama coming to town. That was pretty exciting, having the president of the United States in Birmingham. And everyone did a great job. I just thought it was wonderful, and the controversy over the tickets. You know, I wasn't expecting any more tickets than one, and so I guess I was surprised that people had them, but, you know, it's over now. Last Friday and Saturday, we, and Thursday, well, a little bit of Thursday, the mayor and council had its retreat. And we, we did retreat to Prattville. And it was, I thought, an excellent retreat. I'm very sorry that everyone couldn't fully participate. But that being said, those of us who did learned a lot and developed better relationships with one another, and I think it was worthwhile. And, you know, I am the queen of non-travel, but I thought that, you know, it was a worthwhile thing to do. And I'm, I know my colleagues a little better now. I think Counsel Hoyt even likes me a little better. Of course, I've always liked him, we just disagree sometimes. But, but I thought it was great. On Monday, April sixth, Monday, Glen Iris Neighborhood Association meets. And I know the mayor's gone, but I want him to know that the Neighborhood Association already voted money for a camera, because they're so inspired over catching people who dump in our neighborhood and who litter. So that's one neighborhood, they've already voted the money, so he can buy a camera for that area and catch these people who dump on the neighborhood during the night, like at three A.M. So, Mr. President, that's all for me, and thank you.
Thank you. And I have brief announcements. I want to, Wahoma Neighborhood meets April second, from six to seven, at Eastlake Church. College Hills meets Monday, the sixth, from six to seven, at J C C O. Forest Park South. Avondale meets Tuesday, April seventh, from six thirty to seven thirty, at the Avondale Library. Eastlake meets Tuesday, April seventh, from seven to eight, at New Rising Star Baptist Church. And Fountain Heights meets Saturday, April eleventh, from ten to twelve, at the Fountain Heights Rec Center. I also would like to thank everyone for attending the council retreat. It was a very well-attended, we received a lot of good information. I believe that we're on the right path as it relates to dealing with our budget in this upcoming session. We had some good conversations about the law, from the Law Department, ethics, and just other things that we, as a council, need, and just as a city, period, need to always be abreast of whatever the latest laws are regarding how we are to conduct ourselves. And so I wanna thank everyone for being there. It seems like we, we will have some additional opportunities for, for training, for workshops, and things like that over the next few months. And I have talked to Dr. Ward, went and met with him the day before the president came and looked at his facilities, and he's made those Lawson State available for training and workshops and things like that. So we're definitely gonna take him up on that, because that's a good thing. It's a resource that he definitely wants us to, that he wants to make available to the city, not just the council, but the citizens as well. So that'll, that's good. Finally, I will say, I do have to agree with my colleague, Pro Tim, as it relates to this, the presidential debate, or the presidential visit. It was a very well, the city of Birmingham received the president like no other city could have received him. It was, of course, packed out. There were people from all walks of life that were there. The president really spoke to the citizens of Birmingham while he was here. And he was, you know, he really, I really appreciated what he was saying. And he was really continuing, as he has been since he's been president, to stand up for, for the least of those. And so I am certainly thankful to be a part of it, and fortunate to be a part of it. Now, you know, as it relates to these tickets and access, it is a shame that we have certain members who will wanna cast anything negative about that event up here, from this dais. There are things that happened that were far beyond our control as individual council members, as the mayor, or anyone, regardless of who we may have, who may have received tickets or not. I did everything I could to find tickets for everyone who asked. Council members even asked me for additional tickets, and I did what I could to help find them. But there was the White House, there was the DNC, and everybody else involved that, that provided access and tickets to the president and to hear him speak. And, and we do have relationships, I hope we all do, that, that go far beyond these elected offices that we have, that would help facilitate those types of things when we need them. And yes, I've made sure that both of my parents were there and present, because that was something that you won't, I don't think we may have an opportunity to see again. And so the Pro Tim called me the night before and let me know that he was straight. You know, he took care of his family, because it's important for, for something that's so historical for us. And so for council members to sit up here and talk about anything negative about that event is just beyond me. But we will continue to work to make the city a better place. The mayor works very hard at that. I'm pleased to know that he talked to Council Scales about it. I didn't know about that. But I know that he is committed to doing what he can to make the city a better place for all of its citizens. And so even though we don't agree with everything that each one of us do on an individual basis, we still, it's our right to disagree, but it's a way to disagree. And so I just want to thank each one of y'all for being at the, at the retreat meeting, whatever you call it, this weekend. It was very, it was long and tiring, but it was very well worth it. I wanna thank our neighborhood, our police officers, Officer Lewis and Officer Willie Willis, for providing our security today. Do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Second? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This meeting is adjourned.
You finished?